Okay, I'm gonna call the order of this meeting of the November seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, City of Nashua Planning Board. Uh, can we get a... Are you gonna do the role, Larry? Okay, go ahead.
Mayor Doncicus, Mike Peterson.
Here.
Scott LaClair.
Here.
Adam Varley.
Here.
Maggie Harper. Patricia Cle.
Here.
Dan Hudson.
Here.
Bob Ballinger.
Here.
Larry Hirsch.
Here.
Mark Meehan. Derek Tebow.
Okay. All right, so we have a quorum. We're gonna go ahead and move forward with the agenda. So first off, for the board in your packet, you had a set of minutes from the November third, twenty twenty-two Planning Board meeting. Has anybody had a chance to take a look at those and wanna make a motion as to whether they're ready for us to accept as written?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to accept the meetings of the November third, twenty twenty-two Nashua City Planning Board meeting as written.
Okay, so we have that motion to accept the November third, twenty twenty-two minutes as written. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Alderman Cle. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll give an extension because I wasn't there. So there's two extensions and that motion passes. Okay?
Who's the abstentions?
Uh, me and Larry.
Okay.
Okay, uh, communications?
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the planning board. The following communications came in after your packets were mailed out. Case eight twenty-two oh one eight-two and oh oh three-nine. We have a letter from Kathy Hirsch dated November third. This is for the Merrick Place Project. We have email from Ms. McCarthy, Ms. Piverotto, Mr. Cutan, Mr. Dimeo, Mr. Patel, Mr. Reader, and Mr. Isk... Iskavinkoff. Uh, the next one is a letter from Keith Norstrom Associates, response to engineering comments and some additional plans dated November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. And that is for the same case. Uh, eight twenty-two oh one five-nine, that's the Bella Estates or better known Seventeen Bartlett Avenue, Chad Barron, engineering comments. And we have eight twenty-two oh two oh five, Joe Mandola, Senior Staff Engineer, innovative way extension, uh, comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, any communications from anybody? Subcommittees or anything? No? Okay. All right, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and read the procedure of the meeting. So, um, the procedure of the meeting and hearings will be as follows. So after each legal notice of each conditional special use permit, site plan, or subdivision plan is read by myself, the board will first determine if the application is complete and ready for us to take jurisdiction. If we do take jurisdiction, then a public hearing will begin, at which time the applicant or their representative will be given time to present an overview and description of the project. They'll speak to whether or not they agree with the recommended staff stipulations, and the board will have an opportunity to ask any relevant follow-up questions of the applicant or staff. Uh, I'll then ask for testimony from the audience. I'll ask first from anyone wishing to speak in opposition or concern to the plan to come forward. This is your time, if you'd like to, um, to express your concerns or ask any questions you have regarding the plan. If you do come up, please make sure you, um, state your name and address for the record. Uh, next, I'll ask for testimony from anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan. The board will then ask any relevant follow-up questions of the applicant, and the applicant will be, uh, given a rebuttal period, at which time they can speak to any of the concerns raised by the public testimony. After this is completed, the public hearing will end, the board will resume a public meeting, at which time we'll deliberate and vote on the application before us. I'd ask that everyone keep their remarks to the subject at hand and not repeat what has already been said. We wanna be fair to everyone and make the best possible decision based on testimony presented and all the applicable approval criteria established in our Nashua Revised Ordinances for conditional special use permits, site plans, and subdivision plans. I thank everybody for their attention, and, uh, if you do have a cellphone, please go ahead and, um...
This yours?
Either turn it off or put it on, uh, mute at this time, so... Okay, so, first up on the agenda, old business conditional special use permits, there are none. Uh, old business subdivision plan, um, is a case eight twenty-one dash zero two nine nine. That's actually been tabled to December first, so we won't be talking about that tonight. Um, that also goes for the old business site plan, um, for the same addresses at eight twenty-one dash zero three hundred, eight twenty-one dash zero three oh one, and eight twenty-one dash zero three oh two. So those, which is the one forty-five temple, will not be heard tonight. Okay. Uh, next up on the agenda, um, we have a old business subdivision plan. This is, uh, case eight twenty-two dash zero one seven seven. This is the landing at Nashua LLC, care of Dick Anagnos, owner, proposal to subdivide a forty-one point three-one acre lot. Um, this, uh, this is a prop... It's a product of merger of three existing lots on record, and the property is located at two east Spitbrook Road. And, um, we're gonna hear this, uh, together with the s... the associated site plans, um, which are eight twenty-two dash zero one seven eight and eight twenty-two dash zero one seven nine. So, uh, first start with the board. Has anybody had a chance to look at the subdivision plan, application eight twenty-two dash zero one seven seven, and wanna make a motion for us to take jurisdiction?
Mr. Chair.
Take it off the table, I should say. Sorry. Yeah? Yeah.
Mr. Chair, just, just for clarification before the motion?
Yes.
Do we need to take these individually, or can they be done collectively?
Uh, we can take them off the table collectively, yeah, so...
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to make a motion to remove the following items from the table and accept jurisdiction.
Okay.
Um, case number eight twenty-two dash zero one seven seven, case number eight twenty-two dash zero one seven eight, and case number eight twenty-two dash zero one seven nine.
Okay, so we have that motion to remove those three items from the table by Mr. Ballinger. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Varley. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? That motion passes? Okay. So, um, maybe I could just have staff, maybe just give a quick summary, just for everyone that's here, of why this is back up and what we're doing, so, yeah.
Sure, so...
Yeah, make sure you get in the mic.
As you are all familiar, this has been before, uh, the board before, several times, was originally granted approval, and then it was, uh, the decision was reversed and remanded, uh, by the court, uh, and this appeared back before us a month ago, um, and continued to today. We, at that time, we had set a schedule and deadlines for resubmissions, uh, from both the applicant, as well as, uh, voters and members of the public. We had received communications, all within the respective deadlines. Uh, all those communications are included in your packet, um, and here we are, potentially ready to take action, uh, this evening. Uh, if there's anything else you'd like us to cover, we are happy to do so.
Uh, I think I'm all set. Anybody from the board have any questions of staff before? Okay. So at this point, I'd ask, um, is there anyone from the applicant that wants to come forward and, um, just represent these, um, applications?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's John Weaver from McLean Middleton, nine hundred Elm Street, Manchester, uh, counsel for the applicant here. Uh, you have in your packet the, uh, fairly light and short-paged, uh, submission that we filed two weeks ago, uh, which walks through the criteria for the subdivision, the site plan, waivers we've requested, mixed-use district guidelines, uh, addressing the issues remanded by the court, as well as our response to some of the objections that have been filed by one of the voters, BJ's, which operates the nearby gas station. Uh, tonight, I have intended to walk through those criteria, in case you have any questions or want to discuss those further. Um, to the extent that you find that unnecessary, please let me know, and I can shorten my remarks, uh, but that, that was my intention. Uh, if you have any questions now, I'm happy to answer them, um, and if not, I'll, I'll just begin my presentation on that.
Um, maybe just, just summarize the waiver, um, or the subdivision criteria quick, just for, just because not everybody was here at all, so...
Do you want me to go through?
You don't have to read it, just maybe summarize that question for me?
Sure. Um, in, in general, there's, uh, a few key components. First is consistency with the objections, uh, excuse me, the objectives of the master plan, uh, as noted in the filing. The master plan itself, as well as Imagine Nashua, the supplemental materials that support the master plan online include the project as in, within, uh, the terms and conditions that the master plan assumes are going to be going forward, so the, the project is baked into the goals and objectives of the master plan. BJ's has, uh, objected and to some extent, um, that the, that's not the case. I, I don't totally follow what their objection is. Uh, I, I think that, uh, their, I don't totally follow what their objection is. Uh, I, I did notice that, uh, they said, uh, that, uh, a, the, a gas station is antithetical to the core values of the master plan, which I thought was somewhat ironic, coming from a, a gas station operator, um, but I, I think you'll find that the, that this is consistent with the master plan, uh, and is baked into it, as a matter of fact, considered a key project by the, the master plan. Uh, similarly, excuse me, other criteria include, uh, applicable standards, uh, that are outlined in Part Two and Parts Four through Eight of the chapter. The subdivision plan addresses those. Um, I could certainly try and go through those in more detail, but the, the subdivision plan that you have a copy of with the, our September filing from this year goes through those.
Okay.
Uh, aesthetically, uh, the project is consistent with the Daniel Webster Highway retail corridor. The proposed use here, the buildings that are proposed here, completely consistent, will largely blend in with the uses and other buildings that are there. And then, uh, traffic, uh, as will surprise no one here, is one of the key considerations in a subdivision. We have submitted a traffic study last September, uh, that demonstrates that the traffic generated by this project will be consistent, uh, and will not be excessive, uh, given the traffic that's already in this retail corridor. Wayne Husband, when testifying last, uh, in September two thousand twenty-one, noticed there's adequate and appropriate traffic mitigation for impacts generated by the proposed developments. Uh, and the, one of the key intersections here, Daniel Webster Highway and Adventure Way, has been the topic, I know, of a great deal of conversation within the, the community. It was the subject of a hearing at an Alderman meeting in March of this year, and one of the topics that the testimony seemed to keep coming back to, at least as I heard it when I viewed the video recently, uh, were the mitigation efforts that the applicant here has proposed and will put in place at that intersection. And the consensus from that meeting and people who are there and perhaps have had other conversations, please let me know if this is incorrect, but some of the key mitigation measures that are going to address the current traffic problem there are on the table in this application tonight, and one of the key ways that the community will be addressing the traffic concerns there are through the mitigation measures that are introduced by this proposal. So those would be, uh, and, excuse me, one more, uh, one more is the, uh, treatment of stormwater coming off of the site. There's an extensive stormwater report that was submitted in our last filing that addresses how this site is consistent with the stormwater requirements, uh, under the, uh, the city ordinance. So that, that would be my summary of the, the subdivision criteria.
Okay. And, um, just to be clear, the, um, the traffic reports and everything is all the same? You haven't submitted any new information since the September filing?
No, so the September two thousand twenty-one filing, uh, the traffic report that we submitted at that time, uh, we're standing by that. As we understand, Sid, the opinion of the city engineers, the data, the traffic counts in that report are still good at this time, uh, and the reason for that, and I apologize, this was not explained, this was explained incorrectly in my letter, but I, I wanna make sure that it's understood now that I stated correctly. So the, in, in my letter, I incorrectly stated that the two thousand eighteen traffic counts that were relied upon in our two thousand twenty-one traffic study are lower than New Hampshire DOT two thousand twenty-one traffic counts, uh, and that's not the case. What, what I should have said was that, based on those two thousand eighteen traffic counts, our study projected traffic counts for two thousand twenty-one, those are higher, more conservative than the actual DOT traffic counts that are nearby. So, for example, at the Tingsborough border, New Hampshire DOT traffic counts are twenty-two percent lower than from our report. At Autumn Leaf Drive, traffic counts are twelve percent less. Those are both at, um, weekday PM peaks. Uh, for Saturday peak, the Tings, and for Saturday peak, uh, the Tingsborough border had a count from New Hampshire DOT that was thirty-three percent less than what was reported in our study. So it's, we have not submitted a new study because the data that is in our study is still reliable, it's more conservative than what we would get if we did a new study, and we feel that it's reasonable to rely, continue to rely on that because it's more conservative and because the, the traffic mitigation measures will be that much more effective by relying on, uh, on the study.
Okay. Yeah, and I just wanted to be clear that there was no more additional information submitted that, you know, after any of the deadlines we established the last time, everything's been in ahead of time and...
Correct.
Yeah. You know, understanding full well that that was kind of part of the court, um, concern was timing, so I wanna be clear that, you know, we, we are on time with, with what's been submitted so far. Okay? Um, can you just, um, well, I'll ask, so is there any other questions by the board at this time for the applicant? Mr. Varley?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Two, and, and the first is sort of a follow-on to what the chairman was just referring to, but I just wanna confirm for the record again, because this, you know, obviously was, um, you know, identified as a concern by the court and, you know, um, something that we tried to address process-wise at the last meeting. I just wanna confirm from your perspective, um, or from the applicant's perspective, that you have had sufficient time, in your view, to review any materials that have been submitted? I think the last item we had was November tenth, which, which fit the, you know, the deadline we had established, um, process-wise, so I just wanted to confirm for the record, you feel like you've had the opportunity to review, sufficient time to review?
I, I can confirm that we believe we, applicant believes that it has had its sufficient time to review the material submitted.
Great, thank you. And then, um, I did have one more specific question about the, the traffic report, um, you understanding the background that you just provided. You know, one of the comments from, um, counsel for BJ's went to the issue of whether the, or, or I guess their assertion that the, uh, traffic report did not include the traffic related to the BJ's gas station because it didn't exist, you know, at the, at the time of those traffic counts. And, and I wonder if you could just speak to, um, sort of the scope, you know, in terms of what was included in the traffic report in terms of, you know, prospectively looking at, you know, traffic from future development, you know, and things of that nature that would, would or would not account for that?
So BJ submitted its own traffic study and projections when it applied for a site plan before the planning board. We incorporated that data into the traffic report, the, the traffic study that we submitted, so that, that was incorporated, and, um, I don't have it in front of me, but if you, if you want me to go find it, I can certainly find the page where that's referenced.
So, yeah, so, just to clarify then, so whatever they included as the traffic counts in their site plan, you included in your...
That's correct.
Great, thank you.
Alderman Cle?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for clarification, it was something that you touched on about the Aldermanic meeting this spring relative to the traffic at Adventure Way and, um, the right turn on red and so on. That's really what the conversation was. But what you're saying is that part of your proposal is to do some mitigation along the Daniel Webster Highway to try to lengthen that, uh, turn, um, and so on. Is that correct?
Uh, that's correct. So if you look at pages seventeen, uh, and eighteen of the, the filing that I submitted, that includes a list of, uh, mitigation measures and improvements that are proposed, um, not only on Daniel Webster, but on, um, Spitbrook Road, Adventure Way, uh, and are intended to mitigate traffic generated by this project. Uh, with regard to Daniel Webster Highway and Adventure Way, we'll also address some of the existing traffic issues that are there.
Yep, go ahead.
Thank you very much. In, in all honesty and so on, some of the mitigations that you're going to try to do by Adventure Way, um, based on the, the road itself, you're gonna have your limitations.
Oh, yes.
But, yeah, um, but you're gonna be trying to do as best you can to, to, and, and I'm, I'm not saying that you're gonna be out there digging and doing it and so on, but, but you're, that's your plan.
If you want it done anytime soon, I will not be the one doing it, yeah.
So, I mean, I ha... I have talked to our engineer people to, to get a better understanding of it, so that I was fully up to speed. I wasn't here when you were first here, but, um, but I did, I just wanted to clarify for the record and so on, so that everybody does understand that, um, you're not gonna be able to make it go for miles, but you're gonna do the best you can with what we have because we really can't widen that road.
Yeah, and my, that's, that's a good point. My understanding of what's been agreed to by the applicant and the city, as well as the physical limits of that, uh, that right-of-way, is that there's only so much that can be done because of physical limitations, but that the agreement that's been reached between the city and the applicant is going to maximize that space to the extent that can be done, will, uh, will result in material improvements in that, in the flow of traffic there. And another improvement that's going to be made is what's called Alexander Boulevard. It's the, the private right-of-way that's going through the subdivision that will give another outlet for traffic and divide it between Daniel Webster and East Spitbrook Road. Uh, so that will give, you know, if you think of it, water's not an exact, uh, flow of water's not an exact comparison because water only goes down and in the cracks, and people driving are people, and they make, uh, different decisions all the time, uh, but the, uh, but that will provide some relief for, for some of that traffic.
Just a quick follow-up?
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. And, and if I understood correctly when I spoke to, um, Engineer Hudson, um, relative to the, the projected amount of traffic, we're looking at sixty-five percent probably coming more from the Massachusetts Way or down through the Spitbrook Way onto it, and thirty-five percent in the other direction?
I, I think that's correct. I don't have those numbers in front of me, but that, that sounds correct.
So we're not looking at a hundred percent coming in any one direction, we're just, and that's what you're talking about?
No, the, the projections assume that there are, that traffic would be coming from the south, from the north, um, and i... if you look at the, the traffic study, where the flow of traffic is coming from, it's, it's not coming from one direction, it's coming from all directions the traffic is currently coming from.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions by the board? For the applicant? No? Okay. All right. So, um, hearing no questions, I'm gonna go ahead and open, uh, to public comment, and we'll come back to you. Uh, anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concern of a question, come on up. Uh, remember, state your name and address for the record, please. Yep?
Derek Tebow, nine Emerson Road, Nashua. Um, I wasn't really planning on speaking, but I figure if I come out, I might as well speak. Um, so, uh, this is not my ward, I'm in Ward Alderman, by the way, Ward Eight, um, but it's right on the other side of my ward, and, um, you know, call me skeptical, but I've seen the traffic there for twenty years, and I know how the traffic goes, and it is tight in that area, and you get to the holiday times, and it's gonna be backed up, um, quite a bit. Now, before, I, I'd be curious to see the BJ's traffic plan because I'm assuming that it didn't anticipate the traffic that we had, because we did have quite a bit of traffic once it went in. Now, you know, prices of gas, that was one of the better places to purchase gas at the time, so that's why it was packed all the time, but I basically had to put in legislation so that my people on the other side, in Lewisburg Square, could take a U-turn at that light without, uh, people taking a right on red, because it was dangerous. Um, and so, I'm sure BJ's came here and said, oh, the traffic will be fine, and so I'm concerned about it. Put something else there, you put another gas station, they'll probably have very competitive prices, I'm assuming, and, and the, the traffic will be, it's gonna be worse than it is now, and it's not great now. Um, so I would just hope that you guys would be very skeptical of the traffic plan and, and take a look at it. I'm sure Engineer Hudson, um, I will trust him, because he's, uh, been good to us in the past, and I've trusted everything he's put, put, uh, forward, um, at the Board of Alderman, so... But I just wanna make sure we're really looking at that because that is something, when, when BJ's went in, I got lots of complaints about how busy the traffic was there, and I just don't think that's gonna change when you put in something else that's gonna be just as, uh, popular, I would think, so. That's it, I just wanted to put my two cents in on that.
All right, thanks. Uh, anybody else? Come on up.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and fellow members of the planning board. My name is Kelly Jordan Price. I'm attorney at Hankley Allen &amp; Snyder, six fifty Elm Street, Manchester, New Hampshire, and, um, I represent, as the board is well aware, I represent BJ's Wholesale, which owns and operates a gas station on Adventure Way, um, right by the Nashua Landing Site. For the reasons we have articulated previously to the board on several occasions in the past, and for the reasons set forth in our two most recent letters, uh, BJ's continues to oppose the Nashua Landing Project and requested the board vote to deny both the subdivision and site plan approval applications. I wanna make sure that all of our submissions to date are part of the record, and, um, we have a number of correspondence I just wanna refer to, just to make sure that they're all incorporated into the record. So with respect to our correspondence, we have a May sixth, twenty twenty-one, May twentieth, twenty one, June third, twenty twenty-one, July fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, August eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, September eighth, twenty twenty-one, October nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, and November tenth, twenty twenty-two, are letters from my law firm. And then we have also, BJ's has retained as its traffic consultant, Vanessan Associates, and Vanessan Associates has also submitted a number of letters, um, to the planning board that we wanna make sure continue to be part of the record, which are dated June second, twenty twenty-one, July fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, August eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, September eighth, twenty twenty-one, October nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, and November tenth, twenty twenty-two. So to briefly reiterate, um, our substantive comments with respect to why the subdivision and site plan approval should be denied, uh, one of the arguments that we've continued to make is that the project is inconsistent with the goals, strategies, and objectives of the city's master plan. Now Attorney Weaver, um, a few minutes ago said it was ironic that we would be taking that position because, um, we are a gas station use. Um, I just wanna point out that the, um, Nashua Master Plan was revised in twenty twenty-one, which was after BJ's got its approvals, and with respect to the goals of the master plan, both the subdivision and site plan regulations require the board to find consistency as part of the approval process, and a review of that revised master plan demonstrates that the project is actually the antithesis of what the master plan's goals, objectives, and strategies as stated in the master plan actually are. The master plan explains how the city is about to undergo a scenario planning vision process for certain areas of the city, which include the Daniel Webster Corridor that we're talking about here today. Among the redevelopment goals are transforming the area from a car reliant to a walkable, sustainable, family-friendly hub, making environmental change to, at the forefront, including expanding new electrical vehicle infrastructure rather than gasoline-focused industries, focusing on ways to decrease greenhouse gas emissions, adjusting dimensional regulations to discourage suburban auto-oriented character, and instead encourage walkability. The proposed Costco portion of the project, namely a big-box retail and gas station use, is undeniably auto-oriented and wholly inconsistent with the master plan goals for this particular area. The applicant also contends that because the master plan references the Nashua Landing Project, that reference is somehow tantamount to an endorsement of this particular project under the master plan. I just wanna point out, um, a few things on that statement. To be clear, the master plan merely lists future what-might-be scenarios, including making mention of Nashua Landing as one of those what-might-be scenarios. And you can find a link to Nashua Landing on an interactive map, and when you click on the interactive map, it gives some details about this, and it says the status of the project is, quote, "not approved." There is nothing in the master plan that either explicitly or implicitly endorses the Nashua Landing Project. Um, second grounds for why we feel that the board should vote to deny the application is that the proposed subdivision is scattered and premature in violation of RSA Section in violation of RSA Section 67436 in the Nashua Code, because this particular area in Nashua is so overdeveloped that sufficient roadway infrastructure and capacity does not exist for a project of this nature and size. As the applicant notes, consideration of whether a project is scattered or premature can concern whether a project is located in a well-developed area. Another consideration, however, is whether the project is proposed for an area that is well-developed, but on the other hand, does not have sufficient infrastructure to support the development. And here, the infrastructure is wellfully inadequate to handle the type of traffic that's going to emanate from this particular development, as will be further addressed by BJ's Traffic Consultant, Sean Kelly from Vanessan Associates, who is here tonight. The creation of a subdivision to avoid Nashua Code Section 19045, which imposes a requirement of a 750-foot lot line to lot-line separation between gas stations, is also being violated here and is a further reason why this application should be denied. I've made this argument before, and I am aware of the fact that the court made certain findings with respect to that argument. But we maintain our position that the creation of two lots for this combined Costco retail stores, gas station use, purely to avoid that city-wide distance requirement between gas station and gas station is improper. It does nothing to advance traffic control and safety and/or preserve property values, which are the intents or the goals behind or the purpose behind Section 19045 of the Nashua Code. And it's a further reason why this project should be denied. Another argument is that the Board is not authorized under Nashua Code Section 19023D to approve either the self-storage facility or the gas station use, because a variance in a conditional use permit would be required, neither of which has been applied for by the applicant. And with respect to this, I realize that we are... The property is located in an overlay district. But if you look at the language of 19023D, that... 19023 talks about permissible uses and additional uses, and incorporates the use table. If you look at the use table, gas stations are permitted upon the issuance of conditional use permit, and self-storage facilities are not permitted at all. While the language of the Code Section allows the Planning Board to vary the dimensional and other regulations, those decisions have to pertain to a particular use. So, Section 19023 dictates the use and doesn't permit the Planning Board to approve that use as part of the overall overlay district. You still need to go and get a conditional use permit. And with respect to the self-storage facility use, you would still need to get a variance. And again, neither of them has been applied for. And I just want to just touch briefly, very briefly, on traffic. We maintain our position that the applicant's revised traffic impact study is defective, because it relies on 2018 data counts that are outdated, stale, and unreliable. Even using that data, the project would generate demonstrable levels of excess of traffic that render this project unsuitable for site plan approval and subdivision approval. And also, curiously, the Board failed to obtain input from the city's peer reviewer, Hoyle Tanner, even though Hoyle Tanner was involved in the process throughout, up until the time of the September 9th hearing that led to the court case and the remand hearing. And Hoyle Tanner should be allowed to give its voice in terms of the traffic impact study. And we just query why that hasn't happened to date. Unless the Board has any questions, I'm going to ask that Sean Kelly from Vanessan Associates address in further detail our traffic concerns.
Just... I'm not really looking for you to re-present your own traffic study that we've heard several times, just so you know. If there's nothing new in what you're going to present, I'm not sure the Board really wants to hear it. You know, we have heard your presentation on your traffic study. So unless... And if there's anything new, we haven't received it before the 10th, anyway.
Well, I think you... With all due respect, Mr. Kelly submitted... It was attached to my letter. There's a new correspondence from Vanessan Associates, and there are points that respond directly to points made by Attorney Weaver in his early November letter. So, there was a new submission by Vanessan Associates.
I would hear those new points only. No old points that you presented multiple times to me.
Well, if I may just address one...
Yeah, I just... Mr. Chair, the case was remanded to us, so because the applicant... I mean, the BJ's hadn't had an opportunity to respond to the study, the... You know, so I think it's appropriate to listen to whatever responses they have to that study that was submitted last September.
Yeah.
That they hadn't had an opportunity, but that... Yeah, that should be the focus.
Okay.
Unfortunately, we're going to hear a lot of same arguments, probably, which we've heard before, but that's fine. They should be provided that opportunity, I would think.
Okay. Mr. Barley?
Could I just ask one question before we get to the traffic? I just want to ask you the same question that I asked Attorney Weaver, which is, again, given the context in which this has come to us, remand from the court, I just want to get confirmation from you that at this time, again, keeping in mind of the process we put in place in our last meeting and the subsequent submissions, which were all, you know, at least seven days in advance of this meeting, that you believe you've had a sufficient opportunity to review the materials, putting aside your substantive objections, which we understand are independent of that?
We have had sufficient opportunity to review Attorney Weaver's November 10th... Or I might have that date wrong. November 2nd, I think, second submission and respond to the same.
And any other prior submissions by the applicant that preceded that, I'm assuming, as well?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. For the record, Sean Kelly with Vanessan Associates. Thank you for having me before you this evening. I'll try to be brief. I know, you know, it's material you have heard before. What I'd like to do is...
You've got to make sure you hang on to the microphone, just so... Yeah. Thanks.
What I'd like to do is just walk through some of the comments we have on the traffic study that was prepared for this project. As pointed out, we represent BJ's Wholesale Club, and they have a fueling facility at the intersection, as you know, of Adventure Way and Daniel Webster Highway. That facility is highly dependent upon Adventure Way functioning in a manner that operates efficiently, as it's their only means of access. Vehicles coming from the north or south need to use Adventure Way, and vehicles leaving to go south have to use Adventure Way. So, if Adventure Way doesn't work, you know, quite frankly, it has damaged the operations. There really are three main points that we have. And again, I'll try to be as brief as I can related to the traffic study. The first, as is pointed out, is that, you know, this study still relies on data that was collected in November of 2018. You know, when we did our study for BJ's, I'll be mentioning that we also used that same data. And the reason we did is that when we did our study, we were in the middle of COVID. And you really couldn't go out and collect meaningful data. People weren't working. People certainly weren't shopping. The volumes were much lower than they typically would be. So, most states and municipalities direct to consultants to utilize older data, and if necessary, factor that data, because it's more representative of existing conditions. So, they use the same data we did, which is 2018. Since that work was done, COVID is, you know, for the most part, is not affecting volumes anymore. Things have changed. The Adventure Way corridor, if you've been out there with the BJ's operational, it's much busier. We've talked to BJ's, our client, and what they've told us is that on a number of occasions, it gets so busy out there that they bring out a police detail. And that detail actually disallows people coming in from Adventure Way to make the left-hand turn into the BJ's driveway. What they instead do is they direct all traffic to go to the end of the corridor, use the cul-de-sac to make a reverse movement, and then come up and make a right-hand turn into the gas station. Because the traffic is so backed up, if you had to wait for a gap to make that left-in, you're going to have traffic that backs onto Daniel Webster Highway. So, independent of the Costco development, today, under existing conditions, you know, this gas station is quite busy. The price of fuel, as you know, has gone up. It's probably busier than we initially projected, based on current conditions. And we feel it's appropriate to look at these volumes and make sure that the foundation of that traffic study is accurate, because our feeling is that based on what's going on with the police details, what we see at the site in terms of demand, that the volumes of Adventure Way are higher than was projected, and certainly higher than what was included in that 2018 data. There was a note in the... I guess it was the November 2nd letter that was sent to the Board that indicated that, you know, there was a comparison done between 2018 data and 2021 data, and the 2018 data was actually 15% higher. You know, we've gone through that count station data and looked at that, those volumes on Daniel Webster, and both on a daily basis and a peak-hour basis, that that count station, 2021 data is higher. So, we think the data actually tells the opposite story, which is that the volumes that are out there now are higher than they were in 2021. But I think the most important thing is that, you know, we're really, you know, not focused so much on what the daily volume on Daniel Webster Highway is. What we're concerned with is what are those peak-hour volumes in Adventure Way with this busy BJ's fueling facility that's currently operational? And those volumes simply haven't been captured, because new counts haven't been done. And we think it's prudent that that be done, and that that become the foundation for this study, not a projection from 2018. The next concern we had was relative to the trip distribution. And as you know, there were really two ways in and out of this site. You can come in off Adventure Way, or you can come in off of Spitbrook Road. And as pointed out earlier, you know, the distribution patterns are, you know, 65% of the traffic would come from the south, either continuing south on Daniel Webster Highway or continuing onto Spitbrook Road to get to the turnpike. 35% would go to the north. When the initial study was done, what they assumed was that, you know, anywhere from about 200 vehicles, and I'm talking about here new trips, about 200 new trips an hour would head to point south, and about 300... That's in the evening peak. And about 300 trips per hour would head south during the Saturday midday peak. Now, out of those 200 vehicles that would go south in the evening and 300 on Saturday of new trips, you know, zero trips were assigned to Adventure Way. Not a single trip was assumed to go up Adventure Way and make that left-hand turn. And when your peer review consultant, Hoyle Tanner, reviewed the study, they made the comment, and I'm going to quote them, "The Adventure Way entrance appears much more accessible to the primary parking area for the Costco, where the bulk of trips will be generated." And we echoed that concern. It didn't make any sense to us, when Adventure Way terminates right at the Costco parking lot, why not one... And literally, not one single car was put onto Adventure Way in terms of new trips making that left-hand turn to go south. Every single vehicle was sent out Spitbrook Road. And our feeling was that that dramatically understated the impacts to Adventure Way, both in the PM peak and the Saturday midday peak. And again, Hoyle Tanner echoed that concern. The analysis was redone, and there was a shifting of some of that new traffic. Out of the 200 vehicles in the evening peak hour that were all out Spitbrook Road, they shifted 10 cars to Adventure Way. And then in the Saturday midday peak, out of the ballpark 300 vehicles that had gone out Spitbrook Road, they shifted 14 cars to Adventure Way. You know, we agree with Hoyle Tanner that Adventure Way is far more accessible. It literally terminates in their parking lot. And I don't think that the spirit of that comment was to take out of 200 and 300 trips and shift 10 to 14. But that's what the analysis did. They've moved 5% of the traffic to Adventure Way and kept 95% of it on Spitbrook Road. And we feel that that dramatically understates the impacts. It's worth noting that when you look at the pass-by traffic, this is traffic that is already on Daniel Webster Highway that would, you know, go southbound, make the left on Adventure Way, do some shopping, and then continue south. Every vehicle that turned onto Adventure Way coming south exited onto Adventure Way. And similarly, when you look at the distribution of traffic for Phase 2, which we're not reviewing here, and just to be clear, we're focused only on Phase 1, the traffic that goes south, whether to Spitbrook or Daniel Webster, also went on Adventure Way. So, the trip distribution patterns they utilized, we don't believe are responsive to the Hoyle Tanner comment. And they're also inconsistent with the patterns they use for both pass-by trips for Phase 1 and the total trips for Phase 2. So, they don't align. And the last concern we have really are the results of the capacity analyses themselves. You know, they're proposing to do some improvements at Adventure Way and Daniel Webster Highway, and we recognize that. You know, and the biggest one would be the extension of that southbound left-turn lane. But when you look at the applicant's, you know, own analysis that's presented in their report, and again, these aren't our numbers, they're their numbers, what they say is that under no build conditions, and that's the... Just the BJ's operational, no Costco, you know, no gas station, no fueling facility, what have you, turning off Adventure Way on a Saturday midday, you'll wait about 65 seconds, and turning right, you'll wait about 53 seconds. So, you're going to wait about a minute to get off Adventure Way. With their project in place, without mitigation, those delays go to 204 and 156. With mitigation, those delays go to 288 and 240. So, we have a movement today of Adventure Way that, independent of this project, is about a minute delay. And what their own analysis states is that those delays are going to go to four to five minutes. You don't really have to have a background in traffic engineering to understand. If you're waiting four to five minutes to get off Adventure Way, that traffic is going to back up. It's going to block the BJ's driveway. It's going to make it impossible to make that left turn in. And you won't be able to do what you do today, which is to use that cul-de-sac to do the U-turn, which the police details are doing, because that's ultimately going to become the Costco driveway. There's been some discussion about this pedestrian phase. And I think that, you know, during the court proceedings, there was concern that, you know, the only reason that the analysis is blowing up the way it is is because we've included a pedestrian phase. And if you take that pedestrian phase out, you know, things will work much better. First off, I would note that, you know, you can model the pedestrian phase to only call it a couple of times an hour. It doesn't have to be something that's included in every single signal cycle. So, there are ways to use the analysis tool to say, "It only gets called twice an hour." Furthermore, they've never run the analysis with the pedestrian phase gone and the proper distribution. And when I say proper, I mean what they submitted in the second study. We still have concerns with it. But there's a note in their report that says, "Note, this analysis was run with the original TIS traffic distribution." So, the analysis results they presented without the pedestrian phase still assume that not a single vehicle, new vehicle from that facility in this parking lot that ends right at Adventure Way would come out and make that left-hand turn. So, you know, in a nutshell, our concerns are really threefold. The traffic count data is stale. Anyone that's been out there knows that that corridor is a lot busier than it was in 2018. And we're confident that if you looked at the volumes, it's probably busier than we projected, because BJ's is doing a lot of business. Secondly, the distribution model does not respond to your consultant's, Hoyle Tanner's, comment. I simply can't believe that when Hoyle Tanner said, "It's a much more accessible to the parking field," that they were suggesting that they shift 10 to 14 trips out of 200 to 300. And lastly, even with only those small changes and the small amount of traffic they put there, they're still showing that the delays are going to go to four to five minutes per vehicle, which is going to cause excessive backups, block the BJ's driveway, and harm their business. So, you know, we're still concerned that, you know, the comments we raised from our initial study, all the way through all five or six iterations, still remain unaddressed, and the impacts to Adventure Way are still understated, and even understated. They're still showing that it's going to be highly detrimental in terms of delays for people getting off that corridor, which is critical for BJ's operations. That's all I have.
Questions by the Board? Mr. Barley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to double-check something, because I thought I heard you say that the wait time at that intersection, the left turn off of Adventure Way on a DW highway, would be worse with the traffic mitigation measures.
That's absolutely correct. If you go through the table in their report, what they say is that, you know, without their project, that left-hand turn is 65 seconds. With their project and just optimizing the timing, it goes to 204 seconds. With their mitigation, which is to change the lane configuration from a left to a left-through with an exclusive right and a no right on red, that delay goes to 288 seconds. It's... The mitigated condition actually results in an additional 84 seconds of delay than if they didn't mitigate it. And these are excessive delays. You know, we're going... We don't have a Level of Service F condition today, based on their analysis. We have a Level of Service E 65 that's going to a Level of Service F 288. These are significant increases.
And just one other question. I think what I heard Attorney Weaver say, and he said he corrected the way he expressed this in his letter, was that not that they were suggesting necessarily that the new traffic counts, the DOT traffic counts, were less, but that they... Less than the actual counts, but that they were less than what they were projecting in their traffic study?
I mean, I'll be frank. There was a comment made relative to DOT data, but there was no backup data provided. There was nothing in there that would let us know what data they looked at to make their initial claim. We simply looked at the count station they referenced in their report, went right to the DOT data, and looked at the 2018 count versus the 2021 count. And the 2021 count was higher. I'm not sure... We don't really know what the methodology was to come to the conclusion they did. But when we did a straight comparison of DOT data for 2018 versus 2021, the 2021 data was higher.
Right, but just to confirm, I think what I heard Attorney Weaver saying is what they were indicating was that they were not taking 2018 counts and comparing it to 21 counts. They were taking the projected numbers that they had in their traffic report and comparing them to the actual 21 counts.
I... Again, there was no backup, so I'm not really certain what they did. But again, just to reiterate, you know, our concern isn't what the daily volumes But again, I, just to reiterate, you know, our concern isn't what the daily volumes on Daniel Webster Highway are three blocks north of this project. Our concern is what's going on in Adventure Way today? Because Adventure Way is, is really the critical link. It's, it's, we're not concerned with, you know, north of Autumn Drive, what, what the volumes are, it's really what's going on in Adventure Way today now that BJ's is operational and a lot busier than I think people suspected because of the situation with gas prices. And we think that it's important that that gets captured, and that the foundation of this study is based in reality, not on a four-year-old traffic count in a two-year-old study that had projections, when, when the counts could easily be done today.
So, is it fair that to summarize that, to your point just now, you are not really talking about sort of the, the traffic impact on the broader infrastructure, but specifically on Adventure Way and BJ's?
Our primary concern, I would say yes, is, is the, is the Adventure Way corridor, and the fact that the delays are projected to go from one minute to nearly five minutes.
Okay, thank you.
If I might just interrupt, Adam, could you just bring your mic a little closer to you?
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Alderman Klee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I'm probably going to repeat what you've already said, just so that I can clarify. When you, when you talked about the mitigation would actually create more time on Adventure Way.
Correct.
You're not commenting as to how the mitigation will help on the Daniel Webster, because your interest is just Adventure Way, is that correct?
Our, our primary concern is, is the BJ's operations. I mean, that's BJ's hired us to ensure that this project isn't going to result in the inability of their customers to get in and out of their sites. So, our focus really has been Adventure Way, but, you know, we have looked at the intersection in total, but, but Adventure Way certainly is the, is the link of that intersection, if you will, the approach that, that has the most negative impact.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions by the board? Ms. Hudson?
Yeah, just curious how, how you would respond to the applicant's suggestion that traffic will find, you know, basically the shortest route? You, you know, you, you bring up the point of long, the analysis showing long delays on Adventure Way. Would you agree if that's the case that people have an alternate route, might seek an alternate route? Because, because follow, follow the thought process that, you know, if an analysis showed a greater distribution to Adventure Way, that would further exacerbate the, the results there presumably? In which case, wouldn't that, wouldn't that further lead to the rerouting of traffic to a different direction, given that there won't be an alternate route where currently there isn't one?
I, I think we would agree with your peer review consultant, which is that the, the fact that Adventure Way terminates in that parking lot, people are going to see it as a, as a, as a more accessible and more convenient route. I mean, there, there are going to be long delays, but it's, it literally dead ends in the parking lot. I, I don't think that people are necessarily going to, you know, drive by that when they can see Daniel Webster Highway and go, take the more sequestered route around, you know, the whole building and through the gas station area and by the self-storage. I mean, it's, it's, it literally is, the driveway ends in their parking lot. So, we, we agree with Hoyle Tanner that this is going to be the more convenient and accessible route, but the problem is it's going to create much longer delays.
Alderman Klee?
Thank you. I, I want to add on to what Engineer Hudson was saying. For instance, down the road a bit, there's those two entrances to the Webster Plaza, I think it is. There's the one that, that's probably coming from Spitbrook. There's the one that most people take, but oftentimes, especially the holidays, that one backs up. So, then people say, "I'm not going to go to this one, I'm going to go to the next one." And, and I think perhaps that that's what kind of we, we were talking about, I always think in that myself, that if people see Adventure Way is backing up, they're just going to go over to Spitbrook and, and take that left there, even though I know it means having to kind of traverse, but they'll do that rather than having to stay, and don't you think that, I, I don't want to call it self-healing, but don't you think some of that could help?
I, we, we feel confidently that the volumes that exit onto Adventure Way will exceed 10 to 14 vehicles per hour, and only 10 to 14 right now really blows this intersection up. So, you know, it doesn't take a whole lot of traffic onto Adventure Way to make things, you know, operate poorly. Right now, they're only putting 10 out of 200 and 14 out of 300 trips there, and we're getting these, these, you know, significantly longer delays. So, you know, I, some traffic likely will go out Spitbrook, but it doesn't, what, I think the point is that even with these minor increases they're showing, because of the changes they're making to the timing and the operations and the lane configuration to support the project, it's creating much longer delays. So, it doesn't, it doesn't take a lot. I mean, we're talking one vehicle every four minutes on a Saturday, one vehicle every six minutes on a Friday, and, and we're seeing these, these increases. So, it's, you know, certainly some traffic will go out Spitbrook Road, but it, but what their analysis shows is that even with this very, very conservative approach where only, you know, 5% of that traffic that goes south goes out this way, it, it still results in these, these significant increases. So, it's not going to take a lot to, to, to break the bank, if you will, and unfortunately, when those queues happen, they're, they're going to block the BJ's driveway. And you're not going to have the situation today where the police can go out and say, "Listen, you know, you can't make a left in because the driveway's blocked, go to the end of the cul-de-sac and do a U-turn and come back up as a right turn," because the Costco driveway's going to be there, and they're not going to be able to have those, there's going to be conflicts. So, what's going to happen is if, if that gridlock extends beyond BJ's, and then BJ's customers come in and make that left or right turn to get in, and they can't make a left into the driveway because it's blocked, now it's going to back up into Daniel Webster Highway and create, it really has a domino effect where now you're, you've got traffic backing into Daniel Webster Highway, it goes, it, so it, it, again, only 10 to 14 cars did this, and we're confident it's going to be much more than 10 to 14. And based on Hoyle Tanner's comment, we think that they, they agree.
Thank you.
So, I have a question for you. The traffic study for BJ's.
Correct.
Are you saying that study is wrong?
I would say-
That study didn't predict what's happening right now?
I would say when we did that study, we did counts at existing BJ's gas stations, and based on the counts we did there, we determined how much traffic they generate during the peak hours, you know, the evening and Saturday. I would say that BJ's today, in the current market conditions, with the price of gas where it is, people trying to get a discount, that they're, we suspect they're doing significantly more traffic than they typically were doing, you know, two, three years ago. And because of that, that's why we have concerns that this 2018 data with the BJ's projections laid onto it is simply stale, and, and it's not a big lift. I mean, you, you can do a, a traffic count for a couple hundred dollars to just verify what's going on out there, but we suspect that when you do it, I, I mean, if, if the volumes were where we had them projected at, I don't see a situation where the police are required to have vehicles do U-turns at the end of the street. You know, the, the volumes where we had it projected at, the queues wouldn't hit our driveway, people will be able to turn in, get their gas, come back out. But the fact that there is evidence that the police have had to go through on multiple occasions to direct traffic and disallow that inbound left turn tells us that during busy times, there's a problem today, independent of this project. And any volume that they add, even 10 to 14 vehicles with the changes they're proposing, are going to have catastrophic effects on, on operations. It's going to go to level of service F with a, with a very long delay.
Any other questions by the board? Ms. Hudson?
The, when you, when comparing the 18 data and the traffic count station, I noticed you only used a couple of days. Is that, was that the extent of the count? Or did you compare AADT, or did you?
We looked at both the, the daily volumes as well as the peak hour volumes, and in both instances, we tried to do an apples-to-apples, you know, use your Thursday and a Thursday, and then whatever data they had for the, for the, the daily volumes we used as well. But in both instances, it was, it was higher peak hour-wise, and it was also higher on a daily basis. And again, I, I don't want to lose sight of it, but, you know, we, I think we only really were focused on that just to be responsive to the comment that traffic volumes had decreased by 15%. Our real focus is what's happening on Adventure Way, and right now, this report has, has no information that actually reflects today's conditions on Adventure Way, and that's, that's the main concern.
Other questions by the board? All right.
Good, thank you.
Thank you very much. At this point, I ask, is anybody else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concerned to the plan? Okay, I don't know if there's people on Zoom.
I don't see anybody with their hand up.
Okay. Anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan? Okay. At this point, I would go ahead and give the applicant the opportunity to come back and address any of the items brought up by the public.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Few quick responses to some of the issues raised by BJ's counsel and by Mr. Kelly, excuse me. So, with regard to the, the master plan, I, I think that Attorney Jordan Price has misstated what's stated in the, the Imagine Nashua supplemental materials. When she noted that they, that the, the projects listed in that resource are what might be scenarios, it's not actually what's stated there. The, it, what the, what the website states is that when considering what might be scenarios, as in future plans, it's important to consider the key projects that are listed on that site, and this is one of them. This is baked into the goals and objectives of the master plan. This is a key part, key, that's the word used in the master plan, of the master plan. So, to suggest that this is contrary to those goals is simply inconsistent with what's written in the master plan. Couple of quick notes about the 750-foot setback issue. I, I'm a little surprised that this has been brought up again. As Attorney Jordan Price noted, the court struck this down in pretty strong language. This board has ignored that objection multiple times. For the sake of consistency and thoroughness, I strongly advise that the board do that again here. With regard to requiring a variance in conditional use permit for the, for the self-storage facility and the gas station, that again is inconsistent with what the court ruled. The court said specifically that the planning board has the authority to revise uses that are specific to the underlying district in the mixed-use district. The requirement that, for a variance in conditional use permit is specific to the general business district where this property is located. The planning board, under the terms of the ordinance and per the court order, is empowered to adjust the uses to permit those two uses here. With regard to Hoyle Tanner, I, I am not privy to the advice that, or conversations that have been going on between the city and that entity. My understanding is that the, there's a disagreement between city engineers and Hoyle Tanner. I, I obviously am not, and I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but I would say that if the city is dissatisfied with the service that it's receiving from an independent consultant, the city should not feel bound to continue to receive advice from that independent consultant. With regard to traffic, I, I want to address the comments of the alderman and make sure that I'm clearly stating what our representations about traffic are and what the study says about traffic. We're certainly not suggesting there will be less traffic because of this project. This project will generate traffic. This is a store, we expect it to be successful, this is a gas station, it's a self-storage facility, there will be people visiting this property, otherwise, these businesses will not be successful. What we are saying is that, and what the requirement is under the ordinance, is that the project will not create excessive traffic, and that is the case. The traffic that is generated by this project will be consistent with the retail corridor in Daniel Webster Highway. This is the most, either, probably the most densely condensed center of retail in the state of New Hampshire. There is traffic associated with that by its nature. People go to these stores to shop, to visit, to do commerce. That's the purpose of this corridor, and the traffic generated by this project will be consistent with that. It will be more traffic, but it will be consistent with what is expected in this use. The mitigation factors, the traffic mitigation factors that are proposed will make that traffic flow better and will make an improvement in that corridor. The data in the report says what it says. I can't say that Mr. Kelly is wrong with regard to the 288 seconds delay time for westbound traffic in that lane. I can say that as Mr. Husband noted in the September hearing, that the board should not put too much emphasis on that, that is essentially, even though it's during peak hour, I think as Mr. Husband pointed out, it's really 15 to 30 minutes once a week. So, there should not be too much emphasis put on that. And as Mr. Kelly pointed out, the BJ's has really been concerned with Adventure Way. We're looking at the, that entire corridor, and if you look at the no-build versus build data for 2022, southbound traffic through traffic, the time decreases with this mitigation factor for, between 2000 no-build and 2000, 2022 no-build and 2022 build. So, this is going to make a difference in the traffic that people experience at that, that intersection. So, it should not be stated that, that won't be the case. It will be the case, there will be more traffic generated, but the mitigation, the traffic mitigation measures proposed will make it run better. And based on what I was hearing from BJ's representatives, it didn't seem like they had any other solutions, and that certainly seemed to be what I heard at the alderman meeting when I watched that video, that although the traffic on Adventure Way is bad now, they just want to live with it. And maybe I'm misstating that, and I don't mean to do so, but I have not heard any other recommendations. We're offering a recommendation, that seemed to be what I heard from, at the alderman meeting, is that this was seen as a way to make this better. This will also give citizens of Nashua new resources, new places to visit and shop within a corridor where that is where the city wants those uses, and the improvements, traffic improvements that will come with this project will make that intersection, will make that corridor better overall for most visitors. Yeah. Those are my response comments. If anyone has questions, I'm happy to answer them at this point.
Anybody from the board have any questions for the applicant? All right. Any more questions for staff or in the hearing on the board? No? Okay, I think we're-
Thank you very much.
Done the hearing. So, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing on these three items, move to the meeting. So, a couple of comments on land. So, obviously, we've seen this for a long time, we've been through it. Just a couple, addressed a couple of things in specific from the court side of the house. I mean, I feel like we've done our due diligence and done a good job on, on setting schedules and getting responses and people having enough time to, to review things. I personally feel like that's fine. I feel like we have focused on the subdivision, you know, and whether or not, you know, the development of the, of the private road, whether we think that's, whether it's a good idea or not, and, and whether the uses that are proposed out here are, I personally feel like they're good uses for that area. And it certainly is a parcel of land that's, you know, as long as I've been living in Nashua, has not, you know, has been tried to be developed several times, you know, and, and, you know, this looks like a good one to me. And I, I think there are some traffic concerns on the corridor. We're always going to have traffic concerns on that corridor, and the best we can do really is to, to continue to try to make improvements where we can make improvements. I understand that the Adventure Way is not working well for BJ's. You know, I'm not, I'm here to say that, you know, I don't believe they analyze their own site well, if this is what the issues are, you know? And we brought that up several times, but I'm not sure that the Costco or this development, I mean, if, whether this goes through or not, it's not going to fix that for them, so I feel like those are independent issues in my book, but I'm happy to hear comments and discussion amongst the rest of us here. Ms. Hudson?
Yeah, I just want to, I wanted to speak specifically to the Hoyle Tanner peer review.
Yeah.
There's been a lot of, you know, assertions made about, you know, we didn't give them an opportunity to look at it again or whatever. The, the revised traffic study was, made some slight modifications to the previous summits, but it was more of a summation of the previous nine months of traffic study discussions and individual memos and that sort of thing. So, we, from our perspective, the study itself hadn't substantively changed, so we didn't ask Hoyle Tanner to do another review because we didn't feel there'd be any substantive change in their comments. They, they had made, you know, comments about distributions and whatnot. We had, we all had reviewed and considered those and came to our individual conclusions or whatever, and we didn't feel that asking them to go back and analyze again, and basically is a very similar, you know, slight modified study, coming up with the same answers, didn't seem, you know, prudent or worthwhile. So, I think that's, I did want to, I did want to study that. It wasn't that, it wasn't that they did, said what we didn't agree, we didn't, we didn't necessarily agree with everything they said, but that's okay. They're, 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 you know, one engineering company, and another one could disagree. We're engineers, we can disagree as well, so that's, that's going to happen on occasion. But we were, we were satisfied that the input we had received from them, we had fully considered and, and found no, you know, no need to go back and ask for another review.
Alderman Klee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Engineer Hudson. I appreciate you bringing that up about the Hoyle Tanner, because that was one of my questions that I had, why didn't we go that, that route? I, I remember when BJ's went in, they had a slightly different traffic pattern than they have now, and they kind of adjusted to meet their own needs and the, the needs of the, the traffic control and so on. I do foresee that there is going to be traffic there. I do foresee there, there's going to be some impact on BJ's. I do foresee there's going to be some impact on BJ's. But if I'm not mistaken, this, I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but this, this plan for Costco and so on was kind of well-known, at least in theory, when BJ's was building. So this didn't come as a surprise and out of the, out of the blue for it. So yes, I think there's going to be some issues with the traffic. I think it will adjust to somewhat, it's going to self-adjust. People will miss some of those times. I also think that the, maybe down the road, some changes will have to be made, and maybe I should have asked staff this question. If that does happen, does the city get involved and say, you guys have to make any changes? Or do we let them kind of work it out if they see that, or is it become a police issue?
The new, if any new site plans or subdivisions come up during this time, the additional buildings will have to come back to the planning board. So then those can be also taken into account, if that answers your question.
I can address something.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the issue of BJ's and the operations not working the way that they had projected in part of their approval process, that did come up on staff level. I know that planning manager at the time did reach out to them to discuss that issue. Obviously, you know, sending traffic down at the end of Adventure Way and using the city street as, you know, your driveway, your, or storage of your vehicles on the driveway isn't, isn't a, isn't a good thing necessarily. BJ's did do a lot of work. They brought somebody on-site to more actively manage traffic, at least from my observations, try to, you know, get queue more people on-site tighter and have the flow work better, and those things certainly helped to the point that things got much better. The point about the gas prices certainly had an impact. I would go to BJ's regularly, you know, a year ago or so because, you know, the gas was 25, 30 cents cheaper than anywhere else. So, you know, of course, of course, you're going to have a large traffic impact in that scenario. So, so anyway, those are just my observations. I just did want to affirm that we had reached out and had talked to the site operator about those specific traffic issues that were being experienced.
Just one
Sure, go ahead.
Actually, I just lost my train of thought here. I'm so sorry. Oh, my gosh. Go on, it'll come back to me.
Well, I can, I can fill in too. I mean, there is obviously more phases that have been sort of master planned for this landing site, and any of those phases that would come forward, they would have additional site plans and we'd be looking at those. And the impact of those, those additional phases on this first phase, you know, we could address that at that time.
I did actually remember what
Sure.
My, my thought was right now, as was pointed out a number of times, BJ's is recreating through the kind of probably comments from the police, recreating their queue to go down to what is kind of the dead end, the cul-de-sac now. They are not going to be able to do that, correct, once this becomes open and it's more of a Costco or whatever property? So is that going to eliminate one of their issues? Not that I don't know whether or not that's something we need to take into consideration, but is by law, would that
I don't know how that would work per se, but
I mean, if they're, they're using the queue, telling them, go onto somebody else's property, and right now they're using the city to do it, but is, does that become an issue, a legal issue?
The question of using a, a public right-of-way as, as queuing space for driveway?
Right, yeah. That's kind of what they're doing now, I believe.
Right, and it appears that that's mostly during some, some peak times.
Right.
So this is, I think that's important to keep in mind, that there is pressure in this area during peak times, though peak times are a small slice of the day. But regarding the legal issue, we will have to look into that a little further. That's clearly an issue, but, you know, we do understand that the peak times are the key issue here. So it's not, it's not the full day. However, there are some concerns regarding the operations of that driveway.
Just a follow-up?
Sure.
So during those peak times, would BJ's no longer be allowed to queue their people up that way?
So it's not a question of being permitted. Obviously, it's, in a way it is, however, they can't be making the assertion that the, that the additional traffic is impacting their business when they shouldn't be queuing in the public right-of-way anyways. So that's, that's, it's almost a problem that has been created, whether it's just by poor site design or whatever the issue that has, has caused this. It may be exasperated by the additional traffic, but that's not the root cause of the issue.
And you have to look into the fact that that would be an open street at one time to get in right now.
Right.
Other things might come and go.
Yeah, I mean, my comment is just, it's tough for me to look negatively on a proposed development that we even essentially approved in the past because of an adjacent busted site. You know? I mean, that's, to me, seems crazy, but that's just my own opinion, but go ahead.
And I appreciate you, you saying that. I truly do. And I also want to make a point that currently BJ's is, does not, you don't have to be a member to go there, but the Costco gas station, when we get to that point, that is a member-only. The store is a member-only, and the gas station is a member-only. Am I correct?
Yes.
That's how they testified earlier
That's what I thought.
In my recollection.
Indicated in correspondence.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
From my observations, I'm a BJ's customer. Having that low-priced gas is a big draw, but knowing that, I always go in the off-hours because to go there on a Saturday afternoon, currently, under the current conditions, it's always too much traffic for my taste. And then I can only imagine when there's a parking lot full of cars down at Costco and they're exiting either on East Spitbrook Road or Adventure Way, that's going to be even bigger problem, and I would think customers would have to adjust and come in less busy hours if they're really interested in using those stores. That's my observation. Thank you.
Mr. Barley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess, I just wanted to speak, and I'll try to do it briefly, but to some of the, you know, specific issues that, that the BJ's has raised that are reflected in the record, and just, you know, for purposes of the record to clarify, at least, you know, from my perspective, you know, what, what the, my conclusion on, are on those issues. And so one is, you know, you pointed to the one item that the court specifically identified in its remand, which was the, the process issue of sufficient time for the parties to review submissions. And again, I think we've satisfactorily addressed that issue and received confirmation from both the applicant and BJ's that they've had sufficient time. The other issue that the court had raised was the failure of the planning board, in the court's view, to properly consider the frontage on a public, public way. And so I just wanted to speak to that because the applicant did, in this, in its more recent submissions, very explicitly speak to that issue. And in particular, they indicated they either believed that they can form or that the planning board should waive. In my view, the applicant has established a sufficient basis for a waiver from that standard. And, you know, I say we'll recite what the applicant said here, but it seems to me that, practically speaking, given the uniqueness of this property, where it's located in an already-developed area, where it seems to me there really wouldn't be an opportunity to develop the property at all if we were to apply this provision literally and not allow for, you know, a waiver to provide for frontage on the, on the private road. So I just wanted to say I, I view that, that request for a waiver, that standard is having been met, and I believe that the board should grant a waiver as if we were to, you know, agree to approve the, you know, the site plan. And then just, just briefly again, you know, to the specific objections that BJ's had raised, as to the master plan, you know, again, I agree with the applicant, and, and Chairman, you and I obviously participated directly in that process. And even though I do agree that, you know, there were objectives in the master plan that related to, you know, increasing, you know, pedestrian accessibility and, and, you know, reducing the city's carbon footprint, there's just definitely nothing in the master plan that would give anyone an indication that, that, you know, there weren't, that there was a desire that there be no more gas stations developed in the city. And so I don't view the objection based on the master plan as valid. In terms of the traffic, I just want to say, you know, in, in, you know, this is, I'd asked the engineer from Vanessen Associates this question because it seems to me that BJ's objection is really focused on what they anticipate will be an adverse impact on their site. And while that's certainly understandable, in my view, that's not the standard that the planning board is operating under. You know, if we look at our site plan approval criteria, it's, the issue is whether the proposed use shall generate excessive traffic, and that's made in reference to Article 23 of the ordinances. And that in turn says, you know, essentially, are there sufficient facilities to handle the traffic in light of the development? And I think the answer we've heard consistently, you know, certainly from the applicant, but also from city engineering staff, is we do think that the facilities are adequate to handle the traffic. And that provision of the approval criteria also says that if we think that there's going to be substantial traffic, even if it's not excessive, that we can ask the applicant to, you know, incorporate mitigation measures, which is, you know, something that they have done here. And so it seems to me that, you know, the fact that there is understandably going to be an impact on BJ's because of the increased traffic and an adverse impact, to me, that is not a sufficient basis for, you know, denying the plan, and it doesn't constitute excessive traffic, in my view. You know, if that were the standard, then, you know, there would really, you could never have any development that had any adverse impact on the bottom. And that, and by the way, I believe that's true even if you take into account, or even if you accept, you know, BJ's assertions about, you know, what the impact of the traffic will be as compared with the applicant is asserting. And then finally, I just wanted to briefly address the, the issue that BJ's raised about the proposed project being scattered and premature. And I think, you know, again, in my view, that, that standard is not really applicable here, but to the extent that it were, really, to me, comes down to the same question that we'd be looking at in terms of the traffic, which is, are there sufficient facilities to allow for the development? And again, my view is that we've answered that, we've had sufficient evidence and information to answer that question, the affirmative. So I don't think that the, the development would be considered scattered or premature under the code. So, so again, I just, I just wanted to address those issues for the record, and, you know, I agree with you, Mr. Chairman. I ultimately think that this is, this is going to be a, you know, a good project for this site, and understanding that it's going to develop, or going to result in increased traffic is certainly, you know, the applicant acknowledged. I do think that, and as I said the last time we heard this case, you know, in my view, that is in part a function of, of having a densely packed retail corridor like we have here. And I think that the applicant has proposed a site that, that, you know, adequately addresses or addresses as best it can the traffic impacts, so. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else? Okay. All right. Hearing none. I entertain a motion. I would advise that, obviously, the subdivision is the initial, needs to be the initial motion for, to work with anything that's going forward. So if somebody would want to make a motion on A22-0177, subdivision owner, applicant for landing at Nashua, LLC, Dick Agnast, located at 2 East Spitbrook Road, I would make a motion to approve that agenda item with the finding that the plan does meet the requirements outlined in subdivision NRO Section 190-138G. And that will be with a total of 16 stipulations. The first of those stipulations is a waiver request, and that's for a waiver from Section 190-282A and B9, requiring existing conditions plan in minimum scale, and that will read "is granted" and will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. I'm going to add a new stipulation, number two, and that shall read that request for a waiver from Section 190-165A regarding frontage on a public way will be, will read as "is granted" and will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. And then original stipulations two through 15 will be renumbered and shall all read as written in the staff report. Okay. All right, so we have that motion by Mr. Barley with the 16 stipulations as stated. Motion to approve. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Repose? None? That motion passes. Okay. In regard to site plan, the first up is case A22-0178. Anybody want to make a motion on that? Go ahead, Mr. Barley.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. As to new business, A22-0178 site plan, again, owner, landing at Nashua, LLC, Dick Agnast, 2 East Spitbrook Road, I would make a motion to approve, finding that the plan does meet the requirements outlined in NRO Section 190-146D. And that will be with a total of 24 stipulations. The first five of those are waiver requests. Item number one, request for a waiver of Section 190-279EE and B, requiring all existing conditions and a minimum scale, will read "is granted," will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Number two, being a request for a waiver from NRO Section 190-198 with respect to minimum parking, will read "is granted," will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Item number three, request for a waiver from Section, NRO Section 190-172A through J, requiring certain architectural treatments and materials, will read "is granted," will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Item number four, being a request for a waiver of NRO Section 190-215B1 and 2, dealing with post-development peak flows, will read "is granted," will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. And item number five, this relates to the planning board's authority under Section 190-23D and E in the mixed-use overlay district to waive certain use requirements, and so this would allow, this would be a waiver to permit self-storage And item number five, this relates to the planning board's authority under Section 190-23D and E in the mixed-use overlay district to waive certain use requirements. And so this would allow, this would be a waiver to permit self-storage in this district, which would not otherwise be permitted use in the underlying district. And that will read is granted, it will not, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. And then stipulations six through 24 shall read as written in the staff report.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Barley. So we have that motion to approve, A22-0178, with the 24 stipulations as stated by Mr. Barley. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any discussion?
Yeah, discussion. So stipulation 15 was relative to the contribution towards work, which was a portion of the mitigation to contract with an engineer to help us with re-timing of the whole network. We've not, we've not asked them for an updated proposal. It's been a year. So I'm seeking some flexibility to renegotiate that amount with the applicant. I don't know, I don't know what that would mean for a motion, but I would envision that, you know, the price might go up a reasonable percentage, just due to labor cost increases since the last year. And I'd like to be, to an opportunity to be able to amend that accordingly.
I think, if you agree that what I would propose is to amend, I'll amend my motion to revise stipulation number 15 to say, prior to the issuance of a building permit, a payment of $12,322 or such other amount as agreed between the applicant and Wayne Husband, city traffic engineer, you know, shall be paid by the applicant.
Sounds good to me, yes.
Okay. Do you still second that?
Yes, Mr. Chair, second.
Okay.
And sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
I just, one discussion point on my own motion here.
Yeah, sure.
Just for, again, for the record, for clarification, because this was one item that I did not address earlier during the discussion, you know, it relates to the fifth waiver request of yielding authority to the planning board to waive use requirements under the mixed-use overlay district. And I just want to say, you know, again, for the record, I believe that the planning board does have that authority under the plain language of the provision of the land use code. You know, and specifically, it indicates that the planning board has the authority to modify dimensional density and other regulations, and that it relates to all uses contained within or approved as part of a development. It does not refer only to, you know, permitted uses or conditional uses in the underlying district, but to any use as part of the development. And I would note also that it refers to the opportunity for the applicant to continue to, you know, seek variances as an alternative to that, which, in my view, simply confirms that the planning board has the right to vary those uses, you know, that would otherwise require variance. So I just wanted to add that point.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. That motion passes. Okay. So we have left here A22-0179, the site plan. Mr. Barley?
I suppose we'll all three here. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I would like to make a motion as to new business, A22-0179 site plan, again, owner, landing at Nashua LLC Dick Enegast, located at 2 East Spitbrook Road. And that motion would be to approve the application, finding that it does meet the requirements outlined in NRO Section 190-146D. And that will have a total of 27 stipulations. And again, we have a number of waiver requests, which I'll just quickly go through. Item number one, request for a waiver of NRO Section 190-279EE and B, requiring existing conditions be shown, will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Number two, being a request for a waiver of NRO Section 190-184D 1 and 2A, requiring interior landscape medians every 10th space, will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Number three, being a waiver request of NRO Section 190-215B 1 and 2 regarding stormwater discharges and decrease in post-conditions, will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Number four, being a waiver request of NRO Section 190-172A through J regarding various standard materials designs and the customer entrances on all sides of budding a road, will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Number five, being a request for a waiver of NRO Section 190-2981 for a gas station with sets of minimum and maximum width for driveways, will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Number seven, being a request for a waiver of NRO Section 190-198 for the gas station minimum parking, will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Number seven, request for a waiver of Section 190-148, requiring street frontage on a public road, will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. And number eight, again, similar to the, to the prior application, request a waiver under the provisions of the mixed-use overlay district code, in the, provision of the land use code, to permit a gas station where none, one would not be printed under the underlying general business district under Section 190-23D and E. And that will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. And I would just reiterate my comments from the prior application on that. And then items nine through 27 will read as written in the staff report.
Just a quick, on number 19, do you want to set the same wording as?
Oh, yes. Yeah, sorry, my apologies. Yes. So as to stipulation number 19, it should be prior to the issuance of building permit, a payment of $54,678 for work on re-timing the Daniel Webster Highway Quarter and all other conditions, as indicated in the July 26, 2021 letter from Amy Sanders of Fuss and Wheel, or such other amount as agreed between the applicant and city traffic engineer Wayne Husband.
Yes, item number 16, it references Pan Am Railways, and I believe that they have been sold to CSX. Do we need to make that change? Is it CSX? I think it is. I think they just finished the sale this past week.
Did you want to just add or?
Sure.
And/or.
Pan Am Railways or any successors and assigns. Stipulation number 16.
Any successor? Okay. All right, so we have that motion to approve with the 27 stipulations as stated by Mr. Barley. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. That motion passes. Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, we just take five minutes?
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and recess. It's 8:38, and I'm going to take five minutes here to 8:43. Thanks. The next item on the agenda is going to be the item for, let me get the right number here.
220182?
Oh, it's on the other page, sorry. Yeah, it's going to be the, the new business site plan, A22-0205. Mike, were you made into?
Mary Flies?
No, this is going to be John J. Flatley. Yeah, so, yeah.
He's back.
Yeah. All right, so next up on the agenda here, call them back to order here, is new business site plan, A22-0205. This is John J. Flatley Company, owner, proposed 48,000 square foot flexible space building with associated site improvements. This property is located at Eldozer Road. So for the board, has anybody had a chance to take a look at this application? They want to make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction?
Mr. Chair?
Yep, Mr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to accept jurisdiction over new business, case A22-0205, John J. Flatley Company applicant.
Okay, so we have a motion to take jurisdiction of A22-0205 by Mr. Ballinger. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor of the jurisdiction?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. That motion passes. Okay. Chad, you're here for the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Chad Brannan. I'm a civil engineer with Fieldstone Land Consultants. Our office is located at 206 Elm Street in Milford, New Hampshire. With me tonight is Andy Proman with Purnear Proman. He's the project attorney. And together, we'll be representing the John J. Flatley Company this evening. Unfortunately, due to a family health emergency, Kevin Walker was not able to join us tonight. But we'll do our best in his, in his absence. We are before you this evening, seeking a site plan approval to construct a 48,000 square foot flex building within Gateway Hills. This site is part of the larger Gateway Hills development formerly known as the Nashua Technology Park. Currently, Gateway Hills encompasses approximately 400 acres and is a mixed-use development with office, research and development, retail, hotel, and residential uses mixed throughout. Gateway Hills is serviced by one public road, being Tara Boulevard, and three private roads, Innovative Way, Research Drive, and Digital Drive. The project area that we're here before you tonight to talk about is situated over two parcels located within Gateway Hills, Tax Map Parcel A-44 and A-712. Tax Map Parcel A-44 consists of roughly 16.6 acres, and Tax Map Parcel A-712 consists of approximately 4.3 acres of land. And these two properties will ultimately be merged as part of this development. The development will consist of one 48,000 square foot flex building with associated site improvements, which is depicted within the plan set that we have before you tonight. The development is situated on the north side of Tara Heights and will be situated on the west side of Innovative Way. This project does contemplate the extension of Innovative Way, so once that roadway, that private roadway is extended, it would be located on the west side. The subject property is bordered by vacant land owned by the John Flatley Company to the east and north, the Effie Everett Turnpike to the west, and as I stated before, Tara Heights is situated just to the south. This proposed building will be a single-story building, very similar to the other flex buildings that we, we ultimately had received approval on before this board prior, which are also located along Innovative Way. This building will have up to 10 units within it. They would be 40 feet by 120 feet in-depth units. And each unit will have a small office space with a restroom situated on the front side of the building, and then ultimately warehouse space would, would consist of the larger portion of the building and be situated towards the back, where there would also be a bay door. The design of the site provides for parking along the front of the building, where, again, the office space would be situated, and the loading areas would be positioned to the back of the building or to the west. So the building would, would really buffer all activities from the private road being Innovative Way. Along the front of the building, the design of the site provides for 81 parking spaces. 41 spaces are to be constructed, I would say, in phase one, if you will. The remainder of the spaces, we've designed for them, but we're depicting them as future spaces, just because our client doesn't anticipate a need for that much parking. The 41 spaces, I will say, does exceed the minimum requirements, which is depicted in the plans, which I believe is. which I believe is thirty-two spaces. Of those forty-one spaces, we are proposing four ADA accessible parking spaces. And then to the rear of the site, the layout provides for thirty parking, truck parking and loading spaces adjacent to the building. And then there's sixteen additional spaces that you can see along the western portion of the pavement for some additional parking. As you can see on the plan, the site does provide for access all the way around the building as well. That was really a requirement of the fire department, but also something that our client wanted to provide for deliveries and truck access through the, the site. As I stated before, access to this site will be provided by an extension of Innovative Way, which is a private road. This extension would consist of approximately seven hundred and ninety-five feet to the end of what we're proposing as Innovative Way. It would be about seven hundred and twenty-five feet to the intersection into the, into the project. This development will be serviced by municipal sewer, natural gas, Pennachuck water, and underground utilities, such as electric phone and cable. And other site improvements will include internal, internal access aisles, walkways, landscaping, lighting, drainage, and utility infrastructure, all of which are detailed within the plan set that we have before you tonight. The parking and internal traffic patterns have been designed to provide for adequate turning radius, turning movements for daily use as well as emergency response vehicles. And we are happy to report that we have worked with the fire department and I think they're, you've seen in their latest communication that, that they are happy with the, the latest design. The lighting plans for this project consist of installing a blend of pole-mounted and bildded mounting lighting. All of the lighting would be downcast and meet the city standards, so there would be no light pollution as a result of this project. And drainage for this project consists of collecting and conveying all of the stormwater runoff and, and conveying it to two stormwater management practices that we have designed. One of them, one of the stormwater management practices is situated on the east side of the Innovative Way extension. And that would essentially take all of the Innovative Way extension runoff, treat that, and ultimately meter the, the runoff from that location. And then for the building and the parking and the access area, we are proposing a underground stormwater chamber system. That's an infiltration system that would, would mitigate all of the runoff for that portion of the site. We did have an opportunity to review the staff memo for this evening's meeting. And I, I do want to state for the record that we have no issues with any of the recommendations or any of the outstanding review comments that we have from engineering and traffic. We do have three waivers with this application. The waivers that we have before you are from section one ninety-two seventy-nine EE, which requires that all features be shown adjacent to parcels. We are also requesting a waiver from section one ninety-two eighty-two A regarding the drafting, draft, excuse me, drafting standards and plans not being to a scale smaller than fifty feet to one inch. Unfortunately, with this site, we, in order to depict the total property area, we, we ultimately have to have an overall plan that, of two hundred scale. So we generally always request that waiver with this project. We are also requesting a waiver from section one ninety-one eighty-four D one, which requires that interior parking aisles shall not contain more than ten parking spaces in a row unless landscaping islands are provided. We have those sixteen spaces situated in the back of the building for truck parking. And we really just don't want to put a landscape island in the middle of, of the truck parking. So in working with staff, it was recommended that we request a waiver from that, and so we have that before you. Be happy to go through any of those waiver requests in more detail if the board feels that that's necessary or answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Okay. Thanks. So just architecturally speaking, the other two buildings that are kind of around the corner, this is pretty similar, like materials of construction and?
Absolutely, it's very similar construction. We did submit elevation views and some architectural plans. The John Flatley Company built the same building in Merrimack. It's under construction right now. And, and it's, it's a very similar design, modern design, just like the other three that we've done within this, within this development.
Other questions by the board for the applicant? Mr. Hudson?
Can you just confirm that the, the whole property will be in single ownership? Like each one of these units in this overall building will be sold in, in individual ownership?
Correct, yeah. These will be rented spaces. We're not proposing a condo of this site at this time.
Other questions of the applicant by the board? Right, hearing done. I will open up to the audience. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concerned of the plan? Come on up, or if you have any just questions?
Derek Tebow, nine Emerson Road. It's more questions than it is necessarily opposed. I guess I shouldn't probably ask for a master plan again, right? Because I haven't seemed to get one every time I ask. From Flatley, for the, for the land. But one thing, I, I, I mean, I know this board isn't about people. It's about law, and that's really about it. So it's not a people issue, but I, I do want to ask a couple of questions. I want to make sure that this doesn't connect into the housing on the other side of, of, I guess, Dozier Way or some of the other facilities that you guys are building, the fifty-eight, or actually it's a forty-nine house development now off Shadow Brook and Spit Brook Road, off Timberline and Shadow Brook. I want to make sure that there's going to be no connection in the future. I think that's the biggest concern of the constituents that live around there, is that we're not connecting anything from Innovative Way over into the neighborhoods. I did see also that Dozier Road is going to be gone, I believe, from this as well, so that's another question. I'm just confirming that. Other than that, I mean, it fits the, the area that's there, so. But I just, those two questions.
Sure, we'll, we'll make sure we get those addressed. Anybody else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concerned or have a question of the plan? Is there anybody on Zoom? I don't know how many people we even have on Zoom.
There are people on Zoom, but I don't see any hands raised.
All right. Anybody wishing to speak in favor? Okay. Any other final questions by the board while we're in the hearing for the applicant or staff? All right, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing, move to the meeting, so.
No, we're going to give.
Oh, sorry, I forgot to give you rebuttal. Hang on, I got to open it. Someone open it for me.
Move to reopen the podium.
To reopen, can I get a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ballinger. All those in favor of reopening?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we're reopened, sorry. Short change.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I should have, I should have came up here.
Yeah, I need that.
I just, just wanted to answer some of the questions that were posed. So Dozer Road is going to be discontinued as part of this development. If the board recalls, and it's been some time since we've been before you with developments along Innovative Way, but when we, when we did the Tara Heights Phase Two, we actually extended Innovative Way at that time. And part of the agreement that we had with the city is as we do development through that section, we would discontinue Dozer Road as we, we work our way to the north. So that is detailed within the plans. The way that's been handled in the past is it's, it's always been a condition of approval. And ultimately, that discontinuance process has to be finalized prior to the plans being signed. And that's actually outlined in the staff memo, and we have no objections to that. As it relates to connecting to the north, the, the forty-nine unit residential development, this, this proposal does not extend that far up, so we are not connecting. I cannot guarantee that at some point there will not be a connection. I can, I can share with the board that our discussions with the fire department, you know, certainly they would like to see a connection, you know, to that northern portion. But we are being sensitive to when that's done, if it's done. But it's not part of this project.
Any other questions of the applicant while we're still in the air?
Mr. Chair, I guess perhaps just, thank you, just to follow up on that last statement. With respect to the fire department, are they talking emergency access only? Have discussions progressed that far yet, or would this be a continuation of public ways? Thus, you know, for cross-traffic between neighborhoods?
Yeah, I think the discussion with the fire department has been primarily for emergency access. I mean, they certainly, I haven't heard any statements from them that says we want the, the private road or public road easement to be extended all the way up to that portion. There, there is a, you know, a concern that they've expressed that they would like to have as many, you know, points of access as possible into here. This particular development, you know, kind of extends to that limit because we're at, I think, seven hundred and thirty-five feet and seven hundred and fifty feet's the dead-end standard. So we did review that at length with the, you know, with the fire department. There is an opportunity to loop back around and tie into Tara Heights in, in a couple of locations if we, if we had to. But, you know, that's something that would be contemplated with, with, you know, a future development that, that we're, I can share, we're currently not working on anything else with this, this site. So I don't know what that would look like. But I also can't commit that we would never tie into that development to the north because, I mean, the, this process is, is somewhat fluid. I mean, we, we work with engineering, we work with traffic, we work with fire, and ultimately, you know, together we try to come up with a good plan. And someday that might be connecting, you know, to the northern, I, I don't know.
I, Mr. Chair, I-
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
I appreciate that, that explanation. I, I just didn't know how far potential discussions have progressed with, with fire, at least regarding the specific application before us today. So thank you for the clarification.
Other questions by the board for the applicant or staff or in the hearing? Okay, I think we're all set. So I think I'm good now to, any other questions, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing again. So we've got a, sort of another building, pretty similar to what we've had around the corner from it. Looks pretty straightforward to me, but any comments or any discussion points anybody wants to make here with the?
Just a, a quick question, if Mr. Hudson would entertain it momentarily. We did hear Alderman Tebow discuss master planning, and I know that's been a topic of this board before. This seems like a fairly innocuous piece of the, the larger puzzle here. But I just didn't know if, from staff perspective, there's been any further discussion about formulating a, a larger master plan at this point? Or if there's any sort of recognition of, of the letter that was penned, I think about a year ago, between planning, engineering, and Mr. Cummings' office at the time, so.
Yeah, fair question. No, to my knowledge, there hasn't been any recent discussion on that particular item.
I don't recall.
Yeah. I, I reached the same conclusion as you, this being fairly innocuous addition. But, but no, that, that hasn't advanced beyond the previous point, to my knowledge.
Very good. Just curious. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Hudson.
Any other comments for anybody on the board? All right, Ms. Hudson?
Yeah, just before somebody starts a motion, I would, in the staff recommendations and findings, there, there's the, the date of the letter for number four, for Mr. Mendoza is November fifteenth. And the traffic contribution, which is referenced in five, could be incorporated into number four because that column is included as one of the comments in the November fifteenth letter, which obviously staff didn't have the benefit of having when they drafted the staff report. So, so I would just request that be amended at the, at the end there to, where it says, to the Satisfaction Engineering Department, comma, including a contribution of two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars towards the DW Highway Spit Brook Road Traffic Corridor account, so that contribution is explicitly spelled out. But we, and just to speak to that briefly, what we've been trying to do is kind of incorporate Mr. Husband's comments in with Mr. Mendoza's comments in the same letter, because we, at times, we've had applicants pit, pit engineering staff against each other. We all talk, and there's nothing that Mr. Husband, Husband recommends or Mr. Mendoza recommends that one or the other hasn't seen. And so to try to alleviate this, you know, pitting us against ourselves, basically, I just want, we're trying to compile those comments in the same memo. So that's, that's the nature of the, of the request.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion, comments? Anybody want to make a motion?
I, I can, Mr. Chair, I-
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
I may ask for clarification.
That's fine.
But I'd like to make a motion to approve new business case number eight twenty-two dash zero two zero five. John J. Flatley, company applicant. Recommendation to approve finding that the requirements outlined in NRO section one ninety dash one forty-six D are satisfied, subject to eighteen stipulations. Stipulations one through three are regarding waivers. Those requests, number one, shall read a waiver of section one ninety dash two seventy-nine EE with respect to physical features, shall read is granted and will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation number two, request for a waiver of section one ninety dash two eighty-two A with respect to drafting standards, shall read is granted and will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation number three, regarding our request for a waiver of section one ninety dash one eighty-four D one with respect to landscape medians, pardon me, within interior parking spaces, shall read is granted and will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation number four shall be amended to read the date of November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Stipulation number five shall be incorporated into stipulation number four? It shall read, or should it be amended to include the dollar amount? That was my question, Mr. Chair, and I apologize for not vetting that.
No, I think it's just that the comment number fifteen, well, no.
My suggestion was to amend for, to append at the end of that last sentence to say, including a contribution of two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars towards the DW Highway Spit Brook Road Traffic Corridor account, and then to strike five.
Okay.
And then renumber the rest accordingly.
And Mr. Hudson, apologies again, the dollar amount was?
Two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chair, pardon the-
Yeah, that's fine.
Pardon the interruption there. I would like to actually just amend stipulation number four, not only to include the date of November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, but stipulation number four shall also indicate a voluntary contribution in the amount of two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to the DW Highway Spit Brook Road Corridor Fund. Stipulation five shall be stricken. Stipulation six through eighteen should appear as written in the staff report, but should be renumbered as five through seventeen.
All right, so we have that motion to approve with the seventeen stipulations as stated by Mr. Ballinger. Do we have a second?
Well, I have a question. I'll wait a second.
Okay, good. Do we have a second on this? Eight twenty-two dash zero two zero five? Second by Mr. Hudson. Discussion?
Just, just a question on procedure. The, the applicant said that they were willing to abide by all the comments that were here. I did, didn't see that. I know there have been some comments that were put in here, but do we have to state that they will agree to all comments?
Well, I, I think that's what stipulation number four is basically saying.
Okay, to the all comments, okay. With the including, okay. With the including, okay. I guess I just got a little confused because it was comment number fifteen that we had the twenty-seven fifty, so, okay, thank you very much for the clarification.
No problem. Any other discussion?
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That, that motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, all right. Okay, next on the agenda, we have old business site plans, and there's case number eight twenty-two dash zero one eight-two, and this is a Merritt Place LLC owner requesting a use variance to change the proposed use from elderly housing to non-age restricted residential, and two, a variance to exceed minimum, maximum number of stories to three stories proposed. This property is located at eight Merritt Parkway, so we have that postponed from September fifteenth. I can't remember, was that, is there a couple folks here that were gonna recuse?
Mr. Chair, I will recuse myself as well. Mr. Pierce is already gone.
All right, so we have two recuses up here, I'll wait for them to get off. Remind me, the status of the, is this tabled, or are we?
It was tabled at the last meeting, and the public hearing remains open.
Okay, so we're tabled, and so the first step, and we should, we're gonna hear this by itself because this is a variance hearing, and we won't hear it with the site plan. It's just gonna be the, just the variance. Does anybody on the board wanna make a motion as to whether we wanna take this off the table?
May I ask which number this was again, I'm sorry?
Eight twenty-two dash zero one eight-two. This is the use variance. There's, there's not a staff report, the last part's the letter from Carter Fogg that outlines it.
I will make a motion to remove eight twenty-two dash zero one eight-two. The request for variance, which had been postponed, it says postponed here-
Yeah.
From September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting.
Okay, so we have a motion to remove this from the table. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor of taking this off the table?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? That motion passes. Okay. So we were in the, remind me, we were, we were in the-
Public hearing?
Public?
Yes.
Just in the hearing? Okay, so the hearing is, is, remains open at this point. So first up, I'll give the applicant a chance to come back up and present any new information or comments that they wanna make regarding this, these two variance requests, so.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, I believe this is the rebuttal portion to the public comments.
Correct, yeah, we had public comment, and we had your initial applica, application discussion, and then we had public comment, and, yeah, this is your opportunity for rebuttal, correct?
Excellent. Well, thank you, and good evening. Tonight, I'm here to address the public comment from the previous meeting and provide some perspective and clarity on the issues that have been brought before the board. This is being done tonight with a heavy heart and without the benefit of Attorney Prunier, my longtime friend and counselor who will be greatly missed. Jury's positive impact in this city is tremendous, and his legacy, legacy will live on forever. Fundamentally, I'm going to continue this evening, basically pro se, without counsel. I do have Attorney Prohlman to oversight, as oversight, basically, to ensure that I don't overstep my boundaries. This is the culmination of two years' work, and it would have been difficult to completely bring Mr. Prohlman up to speed, especially in light of his unforeseen increased workload due to his partner's passing. That being said, in the interest of time, I've grouped most of the issues that were considered, similar issues, so that we can address them collectively and rather than individually. First and foremost, traffic. Traffic was the most common concern raised by the public, however, this board understands that the issue of traffic, as it relates to this project, doesn't meet the impact levels that trigger any concern. I understand the sentiment of the citizens, but as looked at by professionals, and it has been, and the applicable standards, this issue is moot. With school impact, once again, the issue of school impact in this project was raised publicly multiple times, however, this was reviewed and ruled, you know, non-issue as the impact was determined to be negligible. Use. It was said countless times that this is, that residential was not allowed use in this zone, and it was intended to be a commercial district. This is a misnomer, as residential is the first and foremost use listed in the ordinance, albeit elderly, but a residential use no less. Property values. The single-family attached use, which I'm, which I'm proposing, is evident in the Barrington Development, which abuts Ballerina Court in the Maplewood Development, and I would argue that it's not impacting their values as they amongst the highest in the Maplewood community, if not the city. Secondly, the only other area within the FUOD that directly abuts single-family homes is the area adjacent to Autumn Glen, and that is also a residential use. That's the only other elderly portion. I don't believe anyone in Autumn Glen has ever complained about having impacted values, and I would say that it's unlikely to have happened. I would argue that having an abutting use being commercial, such as a Walgreens or a gas station, or many of the other possible uses within the zone, would be very impactful. Even Kathy Hirsch, a former Alderman and city planner, wrote in correspondence to Matt Sullivan, and I quote, "Your determination," meaning the determination that all uses could be fluid throughout the district of the FUOD, which is the way it reads. Her quote was, "Your determination then also can be interpreted that the houses north of Conant Road can be any of the issues, uses listed, restaurant, daycare, hair salon, grocery store, to give a few examples. I'm not sure those neighbors would be happy to have some of those uses next door to them, nor was that the intent." Unquote. I would agree with her. I have the same set of circumstances at my parcel within the FUOD. I'm the only other parcel that abuts a single-family detached residential area within the FUOD. So she's correct. I agree with her. I don't think those neighbors would really ultimately like to see those uses, much like the people in Autumn Glen. I can't imagine any single-family house would be impacted by a Walgreens, wouldn't be impacted by a Walgreens in their backyard negatively in a property value situation, and much less so by what we're proposing, which is residential. Semi-rural, this term was used a lot to say that we must be semi-rural. It's very confusing to me because it's raised by people who are pointing out that this should be a commercially-used parcel, but I can't find a semi-rural Hanaford or semi-rural Walgreens anywhere in my purview. I would, however, call townhomes semi-rural almost by definition. Overall, the idea that the FUOD district is confusing, or unclear, or vague, has been conveyed by many. I would actually say it's quite clear, incredibly clear. It may not serve the best interests of those who are in proposition to recognize this, but it is quite clear, and I quote verbatim, "The flexible-use district is developed as an innovative land-use control pursuant to RSA six seven four two one one subsection I. It's designed to promote the health, safety, and general welfare of the community. The flexible-use district is further intended to promote the goals, objectives, and the strategies of the City of Nashua's duly-adopted master plan, capital improvements programs, and its charter and ordinance, thereby effectuates legitimate public purposes and facilitates the orderly growth and development of the city, consistent with the needs of the citizens. The flexible-use district permits multiple coordinated uses and integrated concept development plan, and provides for open space, wetland protection, recreational opportunities." That's a quote of fright from the ordinance, that's what the ordinance intends. It then lists the permitted uses, with the first being single-family, followed by the mixed use, which lists residential first in its subset of uses within that subset category. Many have referenced the intent of those no longer with us. This is a thirty-five-plus-year-old ordinance that was drafted in the eighties, and many of the people have moved on or passed away. I'm sorry. It has been told to us that the intent of those some thirty-five years ago was for this to be exclusively commercial. It has been told that this board does not have the power or authority to prevail over this type of development, it should be remanded to the Aldermanic Board. All of that is somewhat hearsay and conjecture. Orin Reno Council did acquiesce that this board, and I quote, "They have the power to grant variances for anything." Unquote. He then prefaced that by saying it isn't a magic wand, as I would agree. However, I was told by council, my council, and the city planners, the City of Nashua, that two variances were needed, one of which was taken from the underlying zoning, the R thirty-dimensional restriction of two and a half stories. It was taken from the underlying district because the word story, I'm sorry, because the FUOD does not have dimensional charts within the zone. The word story versus actual height came into play, and it's that word that's in question. In the underlying district, if I should be held to that district dimensional requirement, I meet the height, but I don't meet the word story. And again, that's under the R thirty-dimensional requirements, which is not really mentioned in the FUOD. I was also told that a multifamily use would be acceptable with the exception of age restriction. It has been challenged that this use was never intended by those who remember certain things, including Ms. Hirsch, who stated in her letter that the intent of this zone was, and, the intent of this zone, and a three-story structure was never intended in the FUOD, nor was multifamily. Well, rather than rely on the memory of those around today, I looked at the history of the approvals in the FUOD. In nineteen ninety-nine, a three-story, sixty-unit building with a twenty-two thousand square foot footprint was approved unanimously in the FUOD. Even our own Kathy Hirsch sat on the board at this time and voted in favor of it, a plan of which is available here for your review, as it is public record, and I'd like the second slide to be shown, if it may. Yeah, this is a plan that was fully approved in nineteen ninety-nine unanimously. It's a twenty-two thousand square foot footprint, three-story, sixty-unit, multifamily building. The approval was made unanimously without variances, as it utilized the zone as it was intended, to enable this board to use both the ZBA and planning board powers to approve the project in its entirety as presented in its planned form. I asked to see and be done in this project. We were worried that my project would set precedent, but I believe the project, this project, actually sets precedent quite clearly for today's. Now, this project was later amended to become the sixteen detached units in a cluster formation, and that revised plan was approved and built with the same power and authority vested in this board by the FUOD dis, zone. In the minutes of June fifteen, two thousand approval, on page thirty-five, on the public record, this project, the project engineer, who I apologize, he happens to be named Mr. Parsons, it was not me, I was in high school, and he is of no relation to me. It was, I didn't, I didn't know there was another Parsons in town, but he was with Coco and Cormier back at that time. It might be confusing, but Mr. Parsons stated to the board at that time, open quote, "That a plan did exist and was on record with the city staff that demonstrated the original intent was for townhouses as opposed to this apartment-style building, with the difference being that he was asking the board to consider varying from townhouses as they planned to this apartment style because it allowed for more open space." A planning board member, Mr. Lowe, commented, as this board members express concern that this site plan, going from sixty down to the fourteen detached that we have now, or sixteen, rather, and I quote, Mr. Lowe, open quotes, "I have a problem because fourteen is not sixty. Maybe a number closer to sixty would be acceptable." Unquote. That was from Mr. Lowe at that time. So without the clearness of memories or vagueness of memories, this is in print, it's in public domain, and it states the intent of what this board wanted. At that time, they wanted townhouse formation. They actually allowed for a sixty-unit multifamily in one building, twenty-two thousand footprint, sixty-six thousand feet in total, which also negates the fact that eighty thousand square feet is the maximum amount within the district, because this plan would have eliminated any ability to develop anything else other than fourteen thousand square feet in the remainder of the entire district. This plan in and of itself tells the entire story of the intent of the FUOD, and these approvals in minutes take us back to tell the true story, what was intended in this day. It also sets a precedent for this use, as well as the authority of this board in this zone. Lastly, with respect to age restriction, this board's duty is to utilize the zone to meet the needs of the city's master plan, which at that time was for age-restricted housing, due to the issues of that day. The master plan is, is not static, it's fluid. It has changed as many years have passed, but the directive of this zone has not. I would ask that this board enforce the needs of today's master plan, and not the master plan from over thirty years ago, as this zone dictates you not only can and have the authority to do, but you must. And with that, I rest, and I'll take any questions or comments.
Questions by the board? Mr. Barley?
Thank you, Mr. Parsons, for your testimony. Obviously, I think you appreciate that this board is in a somewhat unique position with respect to this case. We are not accustomed to hearing variance applications, it's usually a zoning board function, but because of the particular provisions of this district, we are in the position of hearing this variance request. So, you know, with that in mind, we're obviously not just reviewing this in the way we would normally be reviewing a site plan, and so we're looking at the five specific criteria for, for granting a variance. And, you know, in my mind, not speaking for any other board member, I, I can sort of tick through four of the five and say, I can see how the project would satisfy those four, but the one, and I mentioned this to you the last time we were here, talking about this, the, there is a fifth, at least it's listed here on the sheet, the fifth criteria is the unnecessary hardship. And, you know, as I understand it, there's, there's sort of a fundamental threshold that you have to meet to establish the unnecessary hardship, which is special conditions of the property. And, and so I'm just, you know, again, because I'm struggling with this a little bit, if you could speak to that as to what, in your view, are the special conditions of the property that would, you know, justify application of, of, you know, or conclusion that there's an unnecessary hardship here?
Well, first and foremost, I'm actually at a loss because I'm confused as to why I actually do need the variances, given the approvals that took place in the past, but I have been remanded to, to do such. So I will attempt to do so right now, and I'm also gonna look to my, Mr. Prohlman to do that. But without being a lawyer, it's impossible to say that there is not a unique aspect of this property. It's the only parcel within the entire City of Nashua that holds this, this, you know, in the FUOD district. It's the only parcel. It's the last remaining. There was a lot at one point, but this is the only one, and after, after tonight, or after whenever this is developed, there won't be another FUOD district unless you bring it back. It will close the chapter. That in and of itself makes the property unique. The hardship that I have is, all of the other uses within this zone have been developed, and they had the benefit of being developed without a residential abutter. The only other one was the elderly on the other side that utilized residential to put next to residential, which is what I'm suggesting that we do here, in the same format that we've now shown the board initially intended in this zone to have, and they were concerned we weren't gonna develop the rest of these. And they were concerned, we weren't going to develop the rest of these, albeit raging frustration, but the hardship is that I'm last to develop, I'm last in this entire zone, and all the other uses have been utilized. I have the, I don't have the benefit of having other commercial uses surrounding me. I have a residential neighbor, and I need to be a more residential. This is a far better transition. So I don't know, this, another person spoke in opposition, actually said, you know, when Hanaford owned it, you know, they proposed a thing, we sent them packing, which, you know, proves their true intent was never to allow it to be done as commercial, it's just that's more easily defeatable. But I'm last in this zone, the other uses are there, I have, you know, just by virtue of where I'm located within this district, there's a lot of things that are stacked up against me in this parcel. But if you really look at the history of it, I just ask why I'm being held to a different measuring stick than we used in the past. But I'm going to let Mr. Pearlman speak to the variance, because he's an attorney and I'm clearly not.
Sure.
But thank you, and I'll be right here for anything, any other questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. I am Andy Pearlman, attorney with Prunier and Pearlman here in Nashua, here in behalf of the applicant. Mr. Chairman, members, I submitted a letter to the board late this afternoon. I don't believe it has made its way to you, so I'm going to read that letter into the record, and the letter addresses a number of points, including the hardship criteria. This letter is dated today, addressed to Chair Leclerc and members of the board. This letter is provided in response to procedural and substantive issues raised by abutters and those in opposition to the variance application pending before the board. And I have two points. One is administratively, how does it handle it, and second, with respect to the variance criteria. The first point, Merritt Place's application complies with the administrative procedure set forth in Land Use Code Section 190-25I1. And that section is toward the end of the FUOD, talks about the administrative procedure to get applications or variance applications before the board. The application was advised by planning, the applicant, rather, was advised by planning staff that variances were required with respect to removing the elderly limitation and for the three-story buildings. Attorney Prunier submitted the variance application, which this board properly noticed and is now being heard. That alone complies with Land Use Code 190-25I, number one. That was raised by Attorney Spear, and we just want to touch on that point. With respect to the variance, and so I'm saying this, in addition to the application that Attorney Prunier provided and the testimony that this board has heard, we believe that the variance criteria have been met with respect to removing the elderly housing limitation. Number one, hardship. We have special circum, hardship is broken down into three categories under New Hampshire law. We have special circumstances, then there's the relationship test and a reasonable test. Special circumstances are just what you heard a moment ago. This is the only lot left in the FUOD to be developed. It's the only, there's no other developable lot in the city subject to the FUOD, and that is probably one of the more unique lots that I've ever encountered with respect to special conditions of a property. The relationship test, the purpose of the FUOD is stated as follows, and I'm quoting from the ordinance, "It is designed to promote the health, safety, and general welfare of the community. The flexible use district is further intended to promote the goals, objectives, and strategies of the city of Nashua's duly adopted master plan." And I emphasize that. Capital improvements, programs, charter ordinances, and thereby effectuate the legitimate public purposes and facilitates the orderly growth and development of the city consistent with the needs of its citizens. When we consider the incredible housing needs stated in the recent imagined Nashville master plan, and here's the relationship test, there is no fair and substantial relationship between the general purposes of the FUOD that I just read, the housing needs of the city per the master plan, and preventing the removal of the elderly restriction. There's just no connection there. And finally, with respect to the reasonable test, the third portion of the hardship criteria is the reasonable use test. The underlying zone is residential, and we're proposing a residential use. The design of the buildings, the layout on the lot, the proposed landscaping, the buffer from the residential areas, all present a reasonable use of this property. So that, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Barley, is, again, in addition to what's previously been said in the application, that's our hardship. The public interest and spirit of the ordinance are taken together under recent New Hampshire case law, and I say that the FUOD is further intended, quote, "Further intended to promote the goals, objectives, and strategies of the city of Nashville's duly adopted master plan." The authors of the flexible use overlay district intentionally tied the overlay district to the current master plan, the duly adopted master plan. The proposal to remove elderly housing, the elderly housing limitation is consistent with the needs of Nashua's citizens, namely more housing. Elderly housing was a need when the flexible, flexible use overlay district was originally enacted. Time changed, but now we need housing. Substantial justice, substantial justice is measured by a balancing test of whether the benefit to the applicant is outweighed by the harm or impact to the city. There was certainly gain to the applicant should the variances be approved with little to no, little to no adverse impact to the city. In fact, here we have, here we actually have gain to the city by adding to our housing stock. The balancing test of substantial justice, of the substantial justice criteria leans in favor of approval. And finally, property values. The new construction townhouses are a transitional land use between the homes on Cherrywood Drive and the commercial and retail businesses on Merritt Parkway. A nearby example of townhouses having no impact on property values are the homes on Ballerina Court, which were built after the townhouses on Barrington Avenue. Further, Eight Merritt Place has a significant buffer of city-owned land between Cherrywood Drive and our project. Any commercial use would generate far more traffic impact than the proposed forty-four homes. Townhomes are a logical progression of density between commercial uses and the single-family detached neighborhoods, and we respectfully submit that there's no diminution of profit values by removing the elderly age restriction. And that's the letter I submitted. Mr. Durfee has a copy of it for the record, and again, I'm happy to answer any questions and wish you all happy Thanksgiving.
Questions of the applicant?
Yeah. Yeah, and, and, again, I apologize, but I just want to make sure I've got this down precisely. So with respect to the special conditions, I understand the, you know, the position you expressed, that given that this is the only lot left in the FUOD and the only, I guess, the only lot in the city that is in, is undeveloped in the FUOD, because I don't think, there's no other FUOD in the city. So, that your argument is that that is the special condition that the property is subject to? And I guess just to play that out, when you say that that's the special condition, you mean because of the particular requirements in the FUOD, meaning because the FUOD would otherwise limit this to elderly housing? I mean, is that, because I guess what I'm trying to get to, and I'm not doing a good job of explaining it, but obviously, you know, the underlying district, you know, wouldn't permit this type of housing. The FUOD is more permissive in that it does permit some alternative forms of housing, you know, the elderly housing. And so I'm just trying to connect the dots in terms of the, you know, the FUOD technically more permissive than the underlying district, but that being a special condition that creates the hardship, so.
Well, I think you have it right. I think the, you know, the R-30 wouldn't allow this, but the elderly is allowed in the flexible use. But that, we're the only lot in the city subject to these requirements, you know, that alone is a special condition in our view. That's our, I mean, that's our argument. And again, in addition, you know, Attorney Prunier spoke to the topography and the land itself, you know, there's just a very unusual, you know, criteria attached to this lot as opposed to any other lot in the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Cle?
Thank you. I think it kind of, my question's probably, again, to the, to the special conditions, the hardship. This is an FUOD, FUOD, and there's the R-30 that falls under it. And if I heard Mr. Parsons correct, it may meet the height of the R-30, but it doesn't meet the story of the R-30. I'm not a person to say do a different design or anything, but the hardship is because you want to do this specific design versus, I mean, is that not, not true? So if it were a different design and it were, and I'm not saying that I want the age restriction, but it were the age restriction, there would be no hardship. Is that correct? Am I getting that right?
I'm not following you.
Okay. There was a statement that R-30 doesn't, doesn't meet the story, but it does meet the height. You're saying that the special condition, because this is the only FUOD, and that you're looking for the variances of the, to remove the age restriction, and I assume to the, to do something different in the R-30 than is allowed. Am I correct on that?
That is correct.
Once again, I believe it's semantics to look at the word story versus the height in actual feet. We are utilizing the dimensional requirement that's been remanded to us, which is in the R-30, which is inconsistent with what's been done in the past, I might also add. Okay, but for some reason, because there was no dimensional requirements, rather than look at what the zone was intended to do, which was let this board decide what was fair and just and right, it was remanded to look at the underlying zone. Much like the other previous application that was approved, they veered from the townhouse style to this to save green space, and we would like to do the same, because if you, even though it's thirty feet, but if you take the word story in two and a half stories and you apply the R-30 zone to me, to the letter of that one word, then I'm going to be remanded to go back and put garages much like another development that was just down the street, and it has garages to the side. I'm not fond of that look, and I think it also takes up more space that could be otherwise, you know, better used as green space and buffer. We have the land area to do that, but I think it makes more sense in the betterment of for all to do it, and we respected the thirty-foot height, even though it's been proven that it hasn't been necessary in the past. And if you hold me to the R-30, I mean, even the hoses on Cherrywood are nine-thousand-square-foot lots, they're not adhering to the R-30 zone even amongst themselves. So they're not being held to the letter of that law either. And it has been unclear as to why even we're looking to the R-30 for this dimensional requirement when in fact I'm in the FUOD. But we did our best to look at the thirty. If this board believes that it would be better suited just to save the, it's more virtuous to save the word story, then we'll come back and lower the, you know, and move the garages and come back with a different plan at site plan approval. But that's, that's where we're at. As far as, if I may readdress the hardship to the word, you know, the hardship as we were discussing, Mr. Barley requested, is to the word elderly. And my hardship there is, you know, not necessarily, you know, my being next to the houses next door doesn't mean that I have to have elderly people and not young people. But the hardship there is really by virtue of time, being held to the standard of nineteen-eighty-six in the master plan. We had one high school at that time. We had a different school scenario, so that, you know, I'm being held unnecessarily to a master plan that was many master plans ago. I believe that that's somewhat of a hardship for me to be adhering to a foregone policy. So I'm asking that the elderly be, you know, removed so that we can fit today's master plan, and that's, you know, take away the hardship of time that's passed and the hardship of me trying to apply to a period that no longer is relevant. That's the hardship. It's the time that's passed, and it's the differences in our cities to today's needs. But this board's, you know, role in that master plan of the FUOD, it says adhere to the master plan, not from nineteen-eighty-six's master plan, but the nonstatic movable master plan, and that's what we're trying to do. If this board decides that we have to have it regardless, just to, it's just so we have to keep the purity of the word story, we have to keep the purity of the word elderly, then I can certainly build these elderly. I've made the accommodations to do such. But I'm asking for that variance to eliminate that hardship of time and to adhere to today's master plan. And I think with that being said, this plan fulfills all of the intentions of the FUOD district completely.
Alderman Cle?
Thank you. I don't truthfully have a problem with removing elderly, because I think elderly is hurting the city in the long, in the long run when we stipulate that, so. But I do want to ask staff, if I may.
Yeah.
A comment was made that Cherrywood has gone beyond the dimensions of, of the R-30. How accurate is that? And did they request variance, or is that just a?
I'm unable to speak to that. I would need to look at site plans. I'm not prepared to answer that, unfortunately. I apologize.
No, no, that's, that's fine. I'm sorry to have put you on the spot like that.
But, but I think, if I may.
Yes, please.
And Mr. Durfee can correct me if I'm totally off the reservation on this, but I, I think as part of, I think that those houses are within the flexible use overlay district so that they are not subject to all of the underlying dimensional requirements that would be applicable in the R-30 zone by virtue of being in the flexible use overlay district.
Okay.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Then that answers that question, and I'm done. Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant by the board?
I'm going to say what I said last time, which I'm just confused about the request for the exemption from elderly versus the variance from the elderly requirement versus, you know, requesting a multifamily approval, basically, whatever variance that is required. It seems like, I don't, I don't understand how removing the elderly requirement enables them to do multifamily housing, and that's not allowed in either the underlying zone or the FUOD. And I don't understand why it was previously approved, and I'd be curious enough if any variances or anything were done as part of that, so if staff or anybody could explain.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
I explained that. So the ordinances were slightly different from what they are today to allow what is on that screen. That was permitted by right under the variance of that time. The variance has changed slightly regarding the multifamily use. That question as to whether or not that is pertinent has no bearing on these variance applications. Should these variance applications be approved and we moved into the conversation on the site plan, that would be the appropriate time to have a conversation about whether that multifamily variance would be necessary. So I think we just need to separate the two issues for the time being, because what we're talking about is removing an elderly housing requirement, which is separate from the multifamily question.
Which would allow residential.
Correct.
Okay.
It's kind of steps, as far as I see it, that the first part of this variance is not specific to the.
Form.
Form and the site plan, yeah. You know, it's just not, right? So it's like a subdivision in a, in a site plan, the subdivision doesn't necessarily contemplate the form. So we sort of have to take them independent, is what I'm kind of understanding is, you know, and recommending, is that we focus on the variances that are here in the requests and not go, don't go further yet.
No, I know we have to consider what's in front of us. I just, I, you know, I don't.
Yeah, no.
I don't understand how that gets us to what's proposed.
Yeah.
I guess we'll find out.
Okay. Okay. Get the engineer.
Yes, Paul Chisholm. I'm with Keach Norsham Associates. We're the engineers and surveyors of record. You know, obviously, the, the specific use that we're seeking is very well documented on the plan. So when you, when you look at this, it's, it's a very specific thing that we're asking to do. It's not ambiguous to just say, you know, we're, we're trying to remove elderly and go above the height. We're looking to do it in a very specific form. That's why there's a full site plan attached with this. That's why there's a full architectural plan set attached with it. So, so like, that's the form that we're being, that's being proposed here in that sense. And again, just to reiterate, there's, keep in mind that there's two hardships that have to be proven here. I get the sense from the conversation that there might be some bleeding together of that. They're separate. I think the use was very well documented by Mr. Pearlman in terms of the height. Obviously, I think the intent of the regulation is to minimize the actual height of the structure, right? You don't want something towering over the rest of the neighborhood. That's why that exists. It also exists for fire safety purposes. The thirty-five-foot height that we're meeting meets all of those things, so all of those things are still adequate. It's a, it's a measurement of stories. And the reason why we've gone to three stories instead of two and a half is to protect the goals of this plan, excuse me, of this overlay zone, which is to protect the open space. We don't have a single wetland buffer area or wetland area that's impacted. We have more open space, which are all goals that we're trying to preserve here. It was also the goal of nineteen ninety-nine plan and subsequent two thousand plan. So we're trying to keep all of those things together in, in a reasonable way, because, you know, again, we're not going over that actual height in feet, when in reality, if this was any other commercial site, for example, you could have a thirty-five-foot building. You could even have a single-story thirty-five-foot building, and it wouldn't be an issue. I don't see how that would be more or less impactful, you know, necessarily having that extra store there. It's not like you necessarily see what's going on inside the walls of the building, particularly when it's residential, abutting residential, residential uses. Very similar things are going to be happening at the same time there. So, again, just kind of want to make sure that those things are being considered separate, and that, again, speaking to the form, it's, it's very specific that we're asking for a use variance for this form specifically. So it is well documented and spelled out. And typically, with, with any kind of variance request, you wouldn't have all these additional documents. It's much more conceptual in nature. Again, everything here is, is taken to that next level to speak too specific, so just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Cle?
Yeah? I guess I'm adding to my own confusion here. I, I appreciate the fact that this is an FUOD and that the R thirty is kind of ancillary. But when I'm looking at what the variance is asking for, it's, it says variance to exceed the maximum number of stories, two point five permitted to three stories proposed. So if the FUOD would allow this, why would they need a variance? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think planning has instructed that.
Yeah.
That it was needed. I'm not sure they asked for it.
Right. So, so the, the two point five is dictated by the underlying.
Right.
The FUOD allows the planning board to augment and change dimensional standards, number of stories being, being one of those. So it allows for this flexibility through this mechanism of variances granted by the planning board.
May I?
Yep.
So for my own clarity, this does fall within the R thirty, but the FUOD gives us the ability to.
To modify the.
To modify the R thirty.
Yes.
Okay. The, the other variance is to change the proposed use from elderly housing to a non-age restricted. So those are the two variances that we're looking at and applying the variance criteria to, just so that I'm clear on this.
That's my understanding as well.
That's correct.
Okay. I still have an issue with the special conditions one, but I, I'm gonna let it go at that and.
Just a clarification for me, the FUOD, it, it does not have the height.
Not to my recollection.
Yeah, so, so that's part of the reason, too, is the way that FUOD was written up, it doesn't actually have any height, you know, requirements in it. So the only thing we can really look at is, is the, you know, it's just like, it's like the next piece of information that could be available, but.
May, may I ask another question?
Sure.
Probably to staff. And you might not be able to answer this question, and it may sound silly, but why would the R thirty do a two and a half and not, story, and not just do the dimension? I mean, was there, is there an underlying purpose to that? Fire or whatever?
I think Mr. Chisholm kind of alluded to some of the reasons why. It could be fire, it could be other life safety issues. It could also be aesthetic, but when you compare height to story, functionally, and I do believe that these, these units have elevators in them as well, if, if I'm not mistaken, looking at the floor plans. If that was a height consideration from, from function, you know, the height versus story, I think that argument kind of blends or, or goes away because of the accessibility within the buildings. Please correct me if I'm, I'm mistaken there.
May I?
Sure.
The, the elevator was only if you were going to have to go to the age restricted. Was that not what was said before?
Well, actually, in a larger view, I, I apologize. I thought because of the purview of this board, I'm, I'm actually learning tonight that this was only the variances that were being heard. I thought because of the purview of this board, the site plan and the variances were, this was done as a totality in one project, because that's how it's been done in the past as well. They weren't done separately. They, it was just viewed as one. So I apologize. I thought this was being viewed in its totality. That's why we had a very complete package as well. It didn't just list the variances. It actually shows the site plans very specifically. It shows even architecturals right down to the elevators. And the elevators, yes, they were put in there because in case a variance wasn't granted, then we would be remanded to build under the nineteen eighty-six standards and put elderly. And we, we put the, the elevators, and we designed them with that as an option. I'd be, I'd stand by what I designed either way, because that's what I'm putting forth, and I will live up to what I put forth. But if it's, if it's taken away, and it's the board's decision to take the elevators away, or they're not necessary, I mean, it's designed that way, and I don't have an issue with it being an option. I think that it's, elevators have become more economical in today's world, and people, allows them to stay in their home longer. And I think that there will be a lot of people that actually sell their homes in, in the Maplewood area and want to stay in the neighborhood, and will move to this area. Already been approached by folks that want that. They would like, they're, they're empty nesters, and they'd like to move here. This gives them the ability to do that. But I'm also asking that I don't be remanded to do that across the board, because I want to meet the master plan and the needs of today. But if, if he doesn't, if the board doesn't see it that way, it's designed to be built as a, without the variance.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just a point of clarification on the, on the variances versus the site plan. We need to address the variances before we can hear the site plan. So it's not that we're only hearing the variances. We just need to do that before, because we can't hear the site plan without the site plan being conforming to zoning by way of the variances. So we appreciate the totality and the full package. We need that to contemplate everything. We just have to handle the variances first.
Sam, I fully understand that that's the normal course of business when you have a separate board, and then you have this board, so, because it couldn't be done concurrently with two boards unless you had the meeting with both sets of people here. This is a very unique zone, and historically, it's not been done that way. It's been done concurrently because it's the same people. And in fact, the totality of the plan, you know, my variances are not only in, normally in a ZBA, they're very generic. They're, they're asking for a set of conditions to be relieved, not to be relieved for one specific set of very specific plans. And that's the difference. In this zone, I'm asking for it, not in general, but for this specific plan. Mr. Varley, I believe, kind of alluded to that in the last hearing, is that, you know, when the Oren Reno folks said, there's a whole list of things that, well, the variance is to do this, you know, from the use. And realistically, it's a very complete plan, and it's not a typical format. I agree. I understand. It's normal that it goes to a ZBA, and then a separate set of individuals, and it comes to this planning board. But in this case, they're, they're one and the same, and it's, this is complete.
If I could just speak to that briefly, because, you know, I, I've been on the board for, I think, eleven years or something like that at this point. I mean, this is not, it's not as if there have been other cases like this. This is the first case ever in my time on the board where we've been asked to consider a variance request. There's, there is no precedent, at least from the perspective of the members of this board currently. So it was, it was a decision of this board that the appropriate procedure, in our view, would be to hear the variance requests independent of the site plan, given the, the unique circumstances. So I just, I just want to be clear that that was, you know, this board effectively made that determination because of the, the unusual nature of, of the request that you need to make to us.
I totally understand, and I respect what the board's decision was, but I'm just giving what my, what my thought was based on historical and my review of the district.
Okay.
Other questions by the board? So, do we have, I'm trying to think procedurally. There's, because this is, is going on another night, we do have the opportunity, if, if there's people in the public that want to comment that haven't commented before, I think it's appropriate to, to hear that in this forum. I don't know if, is there anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition, concerned, have a question that haven't, you know, haven't, haven't spoken in the last go around? I don't know if we've got anybody here.
Yes, I would like to speak.
Go ahead. Make, make sure you state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. My name's Kathy Hirsch. I am, my address is, I'm sorry, sixteen Mountain Laurel Drive, Unit 101 in Nashua. And I have been on record and continue to be on record in opposition to this application, but I thought it might be helpful if I took a few minutes and talked about the history of this ordinance and how it came to be. So back in the late nineteen eighties, there was a proposal for this area of the city to develop a project called Hollis Corner. It was six hundred forty-three acres. It would have been something like thirty-five hundred housing units for the village district. It was a big project, and the developer, Sam Tamposi at the time, spent quite a bit of time really working with the neighborhoods and getting a lot of public input. For a number of reasons, that did not come to fruition, and the neighborhood and the planning department and the Board of Aldermen all recognized the need to have a, a master plan for this area. There was a lot of wetlands. It was our last frontier, as we called it, and it was the last undeveloped area of the city. And so the, really, the numerous, many, many, many people, many meetings were held in order to develop this master plan. And then, and in the meantime, actually, the wetlands ordinance passed in nineteen ninety-one, and that was done by citizen referendum. So that was another important part of all of this. So in, around, probably in nineteen ninety-five or ninety-six, Mr. Tamposi and Attorney Prunier approached the planning department and, to talk about this land and the future of this land. So we held, they invited Alderman McCarthy and myself, who at that time was an alderman at large as well, and they invited us to meet with the planning department and with Mr. Tamposi and Attorney Prunier. And so we all agreed on actually what we saw as a vision for the future of this property. And, and obviously, Mr. Tamposi wanted to sell some of this property. We worked very diligently to look at what needed to be reserved, reserved and conserved for conservation land. We all agreed that the village district was an excellent idea for this area of the city. And so I will bring my remarks to that area, which is a flexible use overlay district. We spent a lot of time talking about how big, how much square footage you would need of commercial space in the flexible use overlay district in order to be viable and sustainable, but not attract a lot of people coming through the neighborhood, coming that live in other places. So for example, Hollis doesn't have or didn't have a grocery store at the time. And so it would be a real surface to the neighborhood to have a grocery store. But if you want to call it, as the applicant just called it, I think I wrote down semi-rural Hannaford. Yeah, exactly. There are twenty thousand square foot Hannaford. There's a twenty thousand square foot Hannaford that they built in northern Boroughwick, Maine in two thousand fifteen. You know, Trader Joe's are fifteen to twenty thousand square feet. You know, that's what, exactly what we were talking about. So we agreed through a lot of discussion on seventy-five thousand square feet for that commercial area. And then there was some discussion about having elderly housing as part of the whole flexible use overlay district, and having that elderly housing be there in order to be, to support some of the commercial uses. And, but if you look at the ordinance, the ordinance states that, it talks about the uses and talks about what's permitted in the flexible use overlay district as depicted on the conceptual plan of February nineteen ninety-seven. And if you look at that conceptual plan, you will see that all sixty elderly housing units are north of Conant Road. So the ordinance says up to sixty units of elderly housing in the flexible, flexible use overlay district. And the conceptual plan explicitly shows all of those sixty units north of Conant Road, and, which means that everything south of Conant Road is not housing. And that was the point. The point was to have a village district where there was seventy-five thousand square feet of non-residential use. And if you also look at the conceptual plan, you'll see that there are two lots. There's a lot north of Conant Road, and that's, I think it's Lot twenty-five thirty-three, and that's the one where the elderly housing is. And then there's a lot south of Conant Road, which is twenty-five forty-four. And so in the ordinance, one ninety twenty-five E, talks about the non-residential use, lot requirements, area requirements, whatever. And that's what it's referred to, is Lot twenty-five forty-four, which is where this particular site is. It was never intended to be residential. Why would we set up a village district except for, to, to set that up as a commercial area and then have residential in the middle of it? So that is the history of that, of that particular, that's happening. And if you look at the, at the ordinances, and you don't have the conceptual plan in front of you, and you're not looking at the conceptual plan, then it, it is, you know, it, it may not be, it isn't as clear. It definitely isn't as clear, because it's really the conceptual plan that shows exactly where the elderly housing would be located. If you remember, you had a workshop on February third, and at that workshop, the Alasko Plan, which is the housing plan up Cherrywood and those other streets, that was presented to you, and the planning staff had a difficult time putting their hands on the other plan. Well, the other plan is the conceptual plan that shows exactly where the elderly housing can be. Now, when the elderly housing proposal did come in to the planning board, as referred to by the applicant, it came in as a sixty-unit building, and, because that's what we basically asked for, is sixty units in some configuration. And they came in with that, and then they came back to the planning board, and they were like, you know, this isn't really working for us. It's not as marketable, and it's just, just not as really what we think will work best for us. And all along, this whole development was a collaborative effort. It was something that we worked closely with the developers to make sure that we met their needs as well as our needs. We needed their support in order to pass this ordinance. So this was, this was an ordinance that was, and, and by the way, oh, it did pass in nineteen ninety-seven. Every, every single time, there's a remark about the age of this ordinance. It gets older and older and older. So it passed in nineteen ninety-seven, and the, and Southwest Quarter Master Plan passed at the same time. And we put in con- And we put in conservation zoning at the same time. And we did a lot of things in order to make this happen in the way that was conceived by the community, the community who created the master plan as well as the developers and the city. The reason that there's a height restriction is because in the ordinance, it refers to the architectural design standards that were developed as part of Hall's Corner. And, those are the architectural design standards that are in the ordinance and that are chosen for the ordinance. It's, it is intended so that it is a rural commercial area, so that it blends in with the, with the open space and the natural areas of that community. And I think it's really a very successful area. It's done, it's done well. The buildings are occupied with businesses. Sometimes businesses come and go, but certainly that's not the case. That is the case with any other commercial area that you're going to see. If you look at the original plans, the conceptual plan, for example, you will see that it lists specifically, it lists retail, business, commercial, I can't, I don't have it in front of me. It does not list residential as a use in this at all. So, I realize that's not what is before you tonight. What is before you tonight is, because there's already been a determination made by, by planning staff that this, that residential or elderly housing is allowed in Lot 2544. So, you have to vote on the variances before you. But I would ask, I would ask that you give consideration to putting on, having a future meeting, a discussion, and a really hard look at the ordinance itself to determine whether elderly housing or any kind of housing is really allowed in this area. And we did, by the way, we did increase the density of the, on, of the housing around this property, that the Alasko Housing, the 25, the 250 units by Cherrywood, et cetera, et cetera. That would have been R-30 and that would not have been as dense, but that was part of the negotiations with the developer so that we could all get, you know, so, so we could all get what we wanted out of it. Anyways, I would be more than happy to answer any questions and I hope that that clarifies why it was designed the way it is.
Thanks. I, I do have one quick question, just being that you were involved at the beginning. So, it, it seems like there's all this talk about the potential for a grocery store. It's been 20, almost 30 years of nothing in that site?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, there's never been any development of that site?
Right.
So, I mean, and it, a grocery store's been brought and been, and has failed in, in the planning.
Well, I can, I can address that.
But, so, I'm just wondering, yeah, I mean, was there ever any talk about what if the sites don't work as conceptualized? Because I would say a 30-year site that has nothing on it, I'm not sure we could count that as a success.
That's one site of, I think there's nine buildings on that site right now. Okay, on that lot, on that one lot. There's nine buildings. So, and, and you have to understand the nature of the grocery store business. So, what grocery stores will do is they will buy properties, and I could give you examples, so that other grocery stores don't buy that property and put up a grocery store that might compete with their grocery store. So, the grocery store, you know, Hannaford has a grocery store to exit 6th, and, and so, that's, I don't, I can't say that that's why they bought that, that property. They did come back to the neighborhood twice and looking for a larger, looking for support for a larger grocery store. The neighborhood was not interested in a larger grocery store because we didn't want to attract people from other communities who are west of us. We didn't want to attract them through the neighborhood to go shopping at a grocery store. So, a 20,000-foot, square foot grocery store was the right size. And there were many examples of 20,000 square foot grocery stores. And, the examples, you know, as I said, Trader Joe's, but Sudbury Farms, and there's lots of examples, and Hannaford themselves built one up in North Berwick in 2015. And I shop there because I go back and forth to Maine and it's a very nice grocery store and it's always busy. So, so, 20,000 square foot grocery stores are very, are very useful. And, and I can give you another example of how grocery stores work because it's, it's an interesting issue.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying that a grocery store wouldn't be useful. I'm just saying if it hasn't come in 30 years, I mean.
Right, so there's many other uses of that property that's not a grocery store.
I mean, it seems like grocery stores are going away, to be honest. I mean, we're getting deliveries and stuff now, but, but I, I don't want to argue the grocery store thing, but I'm just wondering, you know, was there any discussions early on about if the lots just don't work as?
Well, it doesn't have to be a grocery store.
Yeah.
There are a lot of other uses, and, and I articulated them in my letter and other people have articulated, and there are a lot of other uses that are commercial uses consistent with, with the other uses that are already there. Don't forget, it's called the Commerce Center at Maplewood. So, it really was intended for only commercial.
Yeah. I'm just wondering about the viability, I guess, having seen the lot.
It doesn't even have to be one 20,000 square foot store. It can be broken down into 10,000 square foot stores.
Okay. All right. Well, I appreciate your background on it. It's very helpful. Appreciate it. Yeah. So, I think.
Procedural question.
Uh, hang on, I, I, let me, let me get through this part of what I'm doing here. Yep, so, yeah, I thank you very much for your comments and, does the board have any other questions for this woman? Okay. I, I would like to finish out the public comment piece. I think there are other people that haven't talked in the past, so I'd like to.
That's my procedural question.
Yeah, I'd like to give them an opportunity, so, go ahead.
One question I'll stop.
You gotta, you gotta, you gotta come up and state your name and address for the record. You can ask anything you want at that point.
I'm just gonna ask one quick question about.
Sure.
Jay Leatherman, Six Cherrywood Drive.
Yeah.
And this is really a procedural question for this part.
Okay.
You mentioned this public, a public comment.
Yes.
And you mentioned it, a public that had not been able to speak last time. Will public who was able to speak last time still be able to talk?
Um.
Is that?
I think as long as you got something new. I mean, I, I don't want to say the same thing again and again and again.
No, I, I understand.
We remember all that stuff.
I understand. This is more of a procedural question because I, I spoke to Attorney Free earlier today and Attorney Spear did talk last time, would like to talk, and so I just want to clarify.
Oh, yeah, I understand he represents several people and I'll give him an opportunity.
Okay, I just want to clarify that. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Yep, so, hang on, Rob, I'm gonna try and get through this part first. But I'm gonna take the people that are here first, so let me, this, come on up.
Janet Richard, 10 Blueberry Lane. I've lived in Nashua many years. I live right off of Main Dunstable. Main Dunstable is a zoo. To get out onto that road, you have to fight with everybody to get out there. The traffic on that road is ridiculous. I, my daughter lives at one end and I live at the other end. I go the speed limit. People are passing me double yellow lines. There's too much traffic on that road. It's a residential area. Putting more houses there is not gonna help. What are you gonna do? Widen the road? Take other people's houses away? Is that what it's gonna come down to? To put more houses down the other end?
Yeah, we can.
I mean, it has nothing to do with the variance. This is my personal opinion.
Yep, and we're, we're happy to hear it. That's, that's the process. So, go ahead.
Well, I mean, and I've talked to other neighbors. They have the same problem getting out on that road and being passed by people speeding on that road. There was someone killed on that road two weeks ago because of speed. It used to be patrolled by police, but it's not so much because the force isn't as big as you, it used to be. So, I mean, there's a lot of problems, but adding more houses down there is not gonna help.
Okay.
That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody else here in the audience that, no? Okay. Um, did you, yeah, go, go ahead, come on up.
I'll be quick because Attorney Spear wants to speak.
Yeah, I have to pull that down.
Short. Sorry. I haven't grown since the last time I was here. Lori McCarthy, 65, Musket Drive, Nashua. Good evening. I'm here in opposition to the proposed development at 8 Merritt Parkway, and I spoke against this proposal during the first portion of this meeting back in September, October, whenever it was. And I've submitted my written objection, so I'll try to be brief in my response to some of the points raised this evening. As the Ward 5 representative to the Imagine Nashua Committee, I have firsthand knowledge of what was discussed, and the first, the Southwest Quadrant was not part of the Imagine Nashua discussion. The areas discussed for development and redevelopment, as you probably heard earlier this evening, were Amherst Street, Broad Street, Daniel Webster Highway, Daniel Webster College, the Beezer Property, Northeastern Boulevard, East Tallahassee Street, and Main Street. And you can see that whole list on page 6 of 96 in the Imagine Nashua Report, NashuaNH.gov. The only thing that came close to a reference on the Southwest Quadrant were the virtual pins that were placed on the crowdsourcing map that was open to all city residents. And those virtual pins came along with suggestions like a small grocery store would be a nice addition, and some expansion of the bike trails off of, one of the side roads would be great to connect to the downtown. If I may quote, "Imagine Nashua Master Plan will combine comprehensive community engagement with major plans created in the past 20 years to create an innovative vision for the future." End quote. The Southwest Quadrant Master Plan is still in existence and is still in effect. By me quote more, "Imagine Nashua aims to take a balanced approach to growth and redevelopment by directing strategic land use planning in neighborhoods and districts that will be, that will see the most positive economic and community impact while preserving those areas that are already established or have stable patterns of development." End quote. This is an established area and it has a stable pattern of development which this, which has been adhered to through the ordinances and the zoning codes since its establishment. The areas discussed for development and redevelopment that would be the most positive for economic and community impact are Amherst Street, Broad Street, et cetera, that list. There are no unusual characteristics on this property. There is nothing unusual or unique in the setting of the environment that prevents the addition of two or more small service establishments as permitted by the ordinance. There are plans readily available, and since the applicant showed you a plan that shows a 60-unit housing project, D Plan 30689 will show you businesses on that lot. Business-developed, biz, buildings for that lot. And they're the proposed locations of the businesses on the lot. So, through, two or three or four small businesses on this property are permitted and they're reasonable use under the ordinance. The applicant and his attorney also pointed out the underlying zone is residential. It is. It is an R-30 suburban residential which does not permit multifamily housing. And while the attorney and the applicant mentioned a couple of other areas where there are townhouses or condos, Ballerina Court, for example, is in the Maplewood Development and is only a single-family house. And all, all of Ballerina Court are single-family houses because they're in the Maplewood Development. And, the, and it does not have multifamily. Barrington Avenue is in an R-18 zone, and they are not in an R-30 zone. So, they're, the multifamily is permitted there. They're in the Meadowview Estates condominium development. They're also across a wetland and on the other side of Cold Brook. So, there's a fair, and there's about a mile distance between them. So, they're not really next door to each other where one could see the other or one could be compared to the other. They are separated by distance and by property. The proposals before you do not meet the goals and the objectives of the Maplewood Development Plan, the Southwest Quadrant Master Plan, or even the vision of for the future of the Imagine Nashua Plan, as they are not in keeping with the adjacent neighborhoods and they set a bad precedent for rezoning or spot zoning of current R-30 and R-40 zone in the Southwest Quadrant, or rezoning and spot zoning in any other area of the city. It sets the precedent, precedent which would allow developers to buy single-family homes in neighborhoods and then redevelop them with multifamily buildings in the single-family neighborhoods. So, the variances have not met all of the points of law and I urge you to vote against them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I, I think that, is there anybody else here? Again, do your best to stay to not repeating what we've heard the last couple of times because it's late and.
Right, yeah, and we've had, we've had extensive testimony already.
But new stuff is fine.
I'm sorry, I'm a part of here. Could you repeat that?
I, I just said, just do your best to stay with new points that are related to tonight. Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Thanks.
My name is Dr. Amy Haas. I'm representing this evening myself, as well as the owners of Color Trends Hair Salon, the Wise Owl Academy, and Maplewood Dental. I've spoken.
Sorry, can, can you just talk into the microphone?
Yeah, thanks.
Sorry about that. The hearing impaired girl doesn't speak into the microphone. So, I'm here on behalf of my own business as well as Maplewood Dental, Wise Owl Academy, and Color Trends. We are all concerned specifically with the scope of this project. We are not opposed to granting an ordinance that this could be residential, you know, transferring from elderly to general residential. We're not opposed to that at all. That could enhance all of our businesses. We don't mind that. That said, 190.23 states that the mix, a mixed-use district should maintain the unique aesthetic, architectural, and visual amenities of the business or cluster of buildings according to Hall's Corner Architectural Design Procedures and Guidelines. And, further, 1925A, permitted uses. It developed in conformity with the traditional New England architectural style. Now, I'm sure there are criteria specifically to say what is and what is not within the specific New England architectural style. I don't understand how these townhouses, as they are presented, are within classic New England architectural style. So, that's its own thing that's a little bit outside of the zoning. The other was that, and this hasn't even been brought up yet, but this goes into a point that I'm going to bring forth from my fellow business owners. The stipulation that this should be a single family, if it was to be residential, a single family, not a multifamily, not a townhouse, but a single family. And, my question is, those two things, the buildings could be single family with the preservation of the New England architectural style. I don't understand where there's a hardship that prevents execution of those parts of the ordinances. That said, the other business owners and I would be, we would very much like a small residential development in there. Abdul from Maplewood, I keep saying Maplewood Pizza, that's Mark. Maplewood Dental specifically said he would love to see 11 or 12 small houses go in there, and we would too. And, that was what I wanted to bring forth. There's some other things, but I think that's the most pertinent. Any questions?
Nope. No, thank, thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep. I think we've got everybody in here. Let's, is Attorney Spear that?
He's on.
Okay. I'll hear from.
Yes.
Yep, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Again, my name is Jeff Spear from Warren Rito in Cochran, New Hampshire, and I'm representing a bunch of the Butters. And I'm, I'm gonna try to address only the things that were raised in rebuttal today, but of course, since they are rebuttal, they may overlap and sound like things I said back at the last meeting, but I'm, I'm not gonna try, I'm not gonna belabor anything. The first issue I want to raise, and I, I think I heard Sam say earlier, that you have adopted, essentially adopted the policy of the, of the ZBA in addressing these things and trying to resolve the variances before you address the site plan, meaning, as a practical matter, you want to make sure that what they're presenting to. you want to make sure that what they're presenting to you, and I think we can all agree that the plans they've submitted are very highly detailed, and they tell us exactly what they want to do, so we don't have to guess. This isn't a conceptual exercise. They've spelled out exactly the buildings they want to build, where they are, what the arrangements are, and so we can look at it and we can say, what aspects of the variance does this violate, and what does it run afoul of? And you should properly ask yourself and determine whether all the variances that are required have been met and are being addressed. And yet you haven't, you haven't done that. So the big elephant in the room here, and lots of people have raised it, some of the public comments, some of the board members, is that this is multifamily housing. I heard Mr. Parsons say that it's single-family housing. I don't know how he gets that. It's plain from the definitions in the ordinance that this is a, these are single buildings with four units, housing units in them. So it is a multifamily development just per building, and then overall, it is a multifamily unit as well. That raises a whole host of issues that would need to be addressed, and all of those variance factors would need to apply to it. I mean, if you are going to take some narrow path and say, well, we're only going to decide the two variances that are before us, you're just going to be back here, again, they can't build this project without a variance for all the things that it's, that are missing. And I talked about them before, they're in the letter. There's the multifamily, which is prohibited in the R thirty zone categorically, and also in the FUOD, which requires single-family housing even for the elderly housing. There are the two area variances that are required to exceed twenty thousand square feet, or ten thousand square feet actually, twenty thousand square feet for certain commercial uses that this is not, and then the overall area variance for that commercial condominium unit. It's going to exceed that. So there's two area variances that are necessary before any of this work could be done, just for the issue of convenience and efficiency, and not to be wasting everyone's time, and for you to consider it holistically and try to decide how the different factors impact each other, you really ought to be doing them together. But I'll move on. The issue that also has been giving people some headaches is the hardship, and I heard Mr. Pullman say that the, that this is the only, and it's been repeatedly described as the only property in the city that's X, Y, or Z. That's, it's the, it might be the only undeveloped parcel, but its development status is not a condition of the property. It is a condition or an artifact of its ownership history. It has to be compared, and the way the standard works is it's measured against other properties in the area, including all of the other units in the Maplewood commercial unit, in the condominium unit, and all the other units around that are part of the FUOD. And I've never heard in the last meeting or tonight any identification of anything that's unique about this condominium unit that is different from anything else anywhere in the FUOD. Saying that it's the only undeveloped one just doesn't cut it. Hold a second, I'm just scrolling down. So in Hillview Town of Chester, there's also the issue on the, on the, on that first element of hardship test, is it is an element of that test that a party who buys with knowledge of the restrictions, that counts as a serious strike against a finding of a special condition. And it's absolutely undisputed here that Hannaford in the first instance, and Mr. Parsons second, he just bought the property in the summertime, knows full well the history of this property and what its restrictions are, all the ins and outs of the condominium documents, what types of uses are permitted, what types of uses are restrict, are actually protected for his unit. All of that is well-known. There's no surprise there, and that weighs heavily against a finding of a special condition. There's also been, and I think Ms. Hirsch just made some very eloquent statements about the types of use that were envisioned for this unit in the past and as part of the origins of the FUOD. You also, as far as reasonable use, have to come in and show why permitted uses are not feasible. And oftentimes, and what happens in these variance applications and the hearings, is the applicant come in, especially when we're talking about a commercial use or a project of this scale, and say that, well, I can't, I can't make any other profitable use of this property. I can't do with it what I want to do, and here's why. So I'd have financial analyses or some market analysis to say, this is the only use that will allow me to get a return on my investment. But there's nothing like that. And as Ms. Hirsch said, I mean, of course, we talk about grocery stores because that is the use that is protected for this unit in the condominium documents, and that might have been something that was intended, but it's not restricted to that. It can be any type of commercial use. And there's been no evidence that they have not been able to get a return on their investment. And that are really the things that were raised tonight that I will comment on, and I will, happy to answer questions and/or leave you just to review my letter.
Okay, thanks. Any questions from the board? Okay. All right. Any other people here in, I mean, I'll, in keeping with our kind of way we do things, usually we would end with the applicant, so I'm fine going to that.
Hi, I would like to speak.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Hi there. My name is Nicole Gillum. I live at four eighty-one Main Dunstable Road.
Okay.
And just in reference to the hardship, I live directly in this community. My daughter attended the daycare there. We utilize the gas station. My dentist is there. There's the chiropractor, the hairdresser, all of it. And I have to say that the plan in place, the vision, the original concepts for the community are working. Our favorite pizza place is there. So this is one parcel within that area that had the same ownership for a very long time and was not developed, but could be developed with the original plan in place and do very, very well. I know many of us in the neighborhood would love a coffee shop, or if I didn't have to drive over fifteen minutes to get Tylenol for my children at a drugstore. So with reference to the grocery store, you know, fine, it didn't work out for Hannaford, but there are so many other options that would fit within the current zoning for this plot of land, which makes, I feel terrible, the rest of all of the, like, the nitpicking and the hair splitting and what you've had to sit through a little bit irrelevant, because there is no hardship. So I'm very much against the proposal put forward tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody else on Zoom before I?
There are other people, but I don't know if anybody else wants to speak. There's no hands raised.
Good.
I'm on the phone. I'd like to speak.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, one thing I will say, I, I...
Can I, can I get your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, sure. Mike Evans, sixteen Holly Hunt. Our original owner, I bought my house in two thousand. I saw the original site plans. I still have them. I knew this pool was going in at the time, and what was supposed to be built there was from Hannaford at that time. So I'm quite familiar with all of it. What's disingenuous from the developer's perspective, from my point of view, and maybe the attorney mentioned this, is that when you buy something and you know what the rules are, then you go in and now you want to change the rules to benefit yourself personally and your company, that's not in the best interest of anybody but yourself. So that's kind, it's not in the best interest of the community or the city. It's only in the best interest of yourself. You knew the rules when you bought the land. Now you want to waste everybody's time here and take up a lot of time trying to change variances and rules that were set in place, you know, twenty-five, thirty years ago for your own self-interest. So, you know, that's my point of view, and I speak for a lot of people in the neighborhood that feel the same way. And as far as I'm concerned, you know, it's like when you, you want to buy a house and you have two dogs in a community and there's no dogs allowed, you can't change the rules now you have dogs. It's the same, conceptually, it's the same thing. You can't make the rules, and you knew the rules when you bought the land. So, you know, it's no one else's issue but your own, and I think you're putting everybody through a lot of needless time and wasted time because of your knowing approach to try to do things to suit yourself. Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Hi, I'm Darian Glasser, residing in three West J Drive. I'm probably the only guy here who's in support of this, although I prefer to be mixed-use, you know, shops at the bottom and houses on top. I'll take what I can get. I just want to speak to the matter of, we just need so much more housing in Nashua. We don't have enough. A current stat we have is, is the current one percent rental vacancy in Nashua is extremely low. We don't have enough housing. Over the course of the pandemic, the inbound rate for people going interstate was sixty-one percent, the fourth highest in the entire nation. Those are people coming from out-of-state, in-state, gentrifying areas and buying places at a rate higher than local Nashua residents could afford. We need this sort of medium-density, missing-middle housing so people can be able to afford to live in Nashua. While I can empathize with people saying that the traffic is going to be very difficult, this is a flexible use overlay district. It's very important we start implementing things like traffic calming, make the areas more, add some bike lanes perhaps, make the roads more squiggly, making it more difficult for cars to go fast. Because whether there are more houses here or not, people still will go fast. I live in a little residential district, and people are still flying down at forty miles an hour, and they're all single-family houses. So the number of houses is not going to change how fast people go or how many cars are there. And I'd really just like for more houses to be here in Nashua because a lot of Nashuans are paying way more than they need to for their houses. Anyway, I'd just like to close this by saying, it's really important we add more houses, and I appreciate that someone's trying to add multifamily houses to Nashua. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. Yeah, we've been going with the public comment here for quite a while, so I think we're solid with that at this point. I'm going to move to sort of the final rebuttal here, if you want to. Take that and...
I definitely want to.
Okay.
Thank you. Actually, never said it before, but I'm Rob Parsons, so loving Goboa Lane in Nashua. Where do I begin? I'm going to make it brief. I know it's been late, and I'm sorry that I had two very large projects in the same night. That was not by design. I definitely did not want that to happen. That being said, I don't know how to speak to Mr. Evans, who said that I didn't do any due diligence and I should know. I actually did a lot of it, and pride myself on the amount of due diligence I do and what I've looked at, and I'm not trying to twist something. I'm actually looking at the zone, and the very, everyone seems to omit, everyone wants to dictate which of the uses in this table of uses I get to use. I don't believe they get to dictate that. People in Cherrywood also bought their homes knowing that they were adjacent to a FUOD, so the same would apply to them. They knew when they bought their houses that they were buying next to an FUOD, and that lot could be developed in any way, from a gas station to a funeral home, to a residential elderly structure. So I'm here presenting that one, because I don't know that, who gets to dictate what I, what I put on this lot. I get to put forth what I think is the best use of it. Mr. Reno, the Orrin Reno Counselor, I don't know his name. He said that it doesn't, he said that it, nowhere does it say elderly housing can be detached. These are single-family attached. They're not multi-unit. There's no common areas. So they are single families. Only one family resides in each unit. They are attached. So it's a single-family attached, and that's my, the definition that I would utilize and my architect utilized. The ordinance does not stipulate the configuration. Even Kathy Hirsch stated this was for sixty units in some configuration, which is consistent with what she stated was, there's an overall plan. You have to look at the plan from nineteen ninety-seven and then look at the ordinance simultaneously. Well, that plan from ninety-seven was not static, because in nineteen ninety-nine, she approved something, and that board approved something that was not on that actual plan from nineteen ninety-seven. They in fact changed it into that sixty-unit, three-story, twenty-two thousand square foot footprint, sixty-six thousand square foot building. So even in her own accordance, she somehow aligned with that developer at that point in time to make that immense. Now, she also stated that it was definitely meant that only that piece of the FUOD was to be used for elderly. It nowhere states in here, and I can't think of any ordinance that signals out a particular lot without actually addressing it in an overlay within an overlay or within a crosshatch area of it. It doesn't say that. It says all of these uses are in the FUOD. It does not delineate what lot. So I would disagree with that. She actually went on to say that doesn't list residential as a use at all. Well, I mean, that's, that's just wrong on its face. It's the very first use. So I don't know where she arrived at those conclusions. Lastly, I'll just leave with this. If I remove both of the variances, and I bring down the height of the building to, and I detach the garages, and I'm under two and a half stories, and I leave the elderly configuration stipulation in place, I need no variances, and I come back to this board by right. It's not necessarily what I believe is correct, so even when Mr. Evans says, you got to know what you can do, well, I know I can do that by right. I only need two variances, and they're to remove an elderly restriction, and they're to remove the height. They're not anything else to do with, I'm not being challenged on any of the other components of my plan. So I can come back to this board with a revised plan that is less beneficial to the city and its residents and the Butters and everyone involved by right. I'm asking for these to actually make it a better overall plan for everyone involved. And I believe that from the heart. It's not some conjecture. And, but I'll leave that to you to figure out whether or not I should come back and do what's by right and is less beneficial to the town and its Butters, or I can do this. Lastly, you know, again, to speak to the fact that everyone wants to dictate which one of the uses I get to do it. I'd like a coffee shop. I don't want to drive ten minutes to the Walgreens. Their hardships of where they have to drive to get their coffee and drugs, it does not materialize to me being put in a position of hardship to not develop under a viable, rightful use. That's not a fair assessment to be applied to me. I had one last statement, and I lost myself. It's been a long, long day and night, and I'm sorry to put you through this, but, no, I guess I'll, I'll remember on the ride home, and then I'll kick myself, so, but thank you very much.
Again, Paul Chisholm, Keach, Northridge. I just want to touch on a couple of points in addition to what Rob just said. I think a question was raised about economic viability, right? Why can't this be a commercial property? Why can't it be a coffee shop? Why can't it be these other things? What I would say is that this lot, this condo lot on this property specifically is best utilized as residential. The residential that's allowed is elderly. The residential that's in the best interest of the city is non-age restricted. The form, the density that was predetermined many years ago was sixty units. The way to get that is in the current form as shown on our plan, without impacting wetlands, wetland buffers, protecting open space, which are all the goals of the FUOD. Again, economic viability, I think if this was going to be developed as a commercial lot, it would have already. I would contend maybe two thoughts for that. Number one, this property doesn't directly front on Conant, Main Dunstable, or Buck Meadow like the other commercial properties do, right? Look at the gas station, for example. Where are those typically placed? On the corner of two streets, high visibility, lots of traffic goes by, that sort of thing. That exists there. That is a typical way that that type of commercial development is developed, right? When you have something that's in the back behind something, it almost has to be a destination. And with the uses on there, I don't know that you would have that. Questions are brought up whether this would make sense as a coffee shop. A coffee shop could be added to any of these other properties, even to this property, for example, at a later date, should it become economically viable to do so. Not developing this as commercial protects additional commercial square footage to be added in a reasonable scale at a later date. Those things can happen. Everybody can have that too. The eighty thousand square foot rule in terms of, again, just overall what's allowed, again, elderly and these commercials are all allowed in this mixed-use village. The elderly exists on a separate property, but still in the mixed-use village. That's why it's there. That's why it was approved in nineteen ninety-nine as that sixty units. It doesn't distinguish in one ninety dash two-five anywhere that this property has to be this, this property has to be that. It's all looked at as one whole property, okay? The eighty thousand square foot rule has never applied to any residential portion of that, either the sixty thousand gross square foot building that was approved in ninety-nine, the subsequent sixteen-unit development that was built and approved in two thousand or two thousand and one and later built. When you look at previous site plans that were approved on this property, you'll see that there's a table for commercial square footages. There's forty-four thousand gross square foot. There's 44,000 gross square feet that have been constructed on the property, commercial. It never once has included in any rendition, any change to that site plan, any of the existing elderly units across the street, even though they're in the same, again, overarching village district. Those square footages have never been considered as part of that limitation. The limitation for the residential component is very clearly stated based on the number of units, which is 60, right? And just in terms of the traffic, again, you know, obviously we've talked about that a little bit. What I would say is typically of commercial development versus this type of residential development has the potential to generate a lot more traffic. So probably not really something you guys don't already know, but at least for the public to understand that as well. So, thank you very much.
Okay. I remembered it. I'm just going to be quick, Rob Parsons again. It's been told, make this a, Kathy Hirsch, who was the resident expert on supermarkets, said that this should be used and it was always intended to do that. Well, Hanaford is who I purchased the property from in July of this year. Hanaford tried and failed at putting one here. As a previous opponent to this said, "We sent them packing." And they did, but they didn't do it without them holding on to this and trying to sell it for some period of time. They owned it for a long time. They did try and fail. Hanaford was bought by Star Market, which then had a different vision of what a supermarket is. Hanaford did try and fail at the neighborhood supermarkets because they don't work. Supermarkets need to be large, big boxes. Everything got larger and now, as you state, now we're going delivery model and they're ghost, we don't even know where they're coming out of. They're coming out of warehouses and being delivered. So yes, the supermarket model has changed, but Hanaford gave up on the model. They tried and failed and then they gave up and that's who I bought it from. So it's already been proven that that's not really a viable, one of the viable uses on the table of charts. When I bought it from them, I said, "Great, because I don't really want to develop that." They tried and failed. I don't want to go down that road again. I'm going to go with what should have been there, which is the number one use, residential. So that's it. So they're gone. The days of getting that supermarket, there was a chance to have gotten it at one point in time and it was voted out. And now Hanaford sold it to me. And here I am and I'm trying to put forth a plan that I think best fits the master plan, best fits this neighborhood and really blends in. So if you see it tonight to grant the variances, I'll move forward in the plan in its current configuration. If not, I assume I'll see you back here with a by-right design that may not fit the best interest of the town, but it will fit bylaws from 1986 or 99 or 97, but not the current standard of 2022. But thank you.
Great. Thanks. All right. All set with the applicant? So for the board at this point, we're still in the hearing, so any questions of the applicant or staff? Alderman, please.
Thank you. I do have a question for staff and it's relative to what Mr. Parsons said. If for some reason we said no to everything, he would have the by-right ability to come in and do smaller height, you know, two stories and elderly. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Hudson?
A question for staff. Can you confirm there's no such thing in the ordinances, no definition that's a single-family attached? And do you, would you characterize these units as multifamily units?
There is no single-family attached definition in the current ordinance and by our ordinance, buildings of four or more units are considered multifamily by definition.
Okay. So the four is the number for us?
I believe it's over three is how it's written in the ordinance.
Oh, okay. Thanks. Other questions by the board while we're in the hearing? Okay. I'm going to close the hearing on this. Thank you everybody for your comments and... So starting the meeting here on this item, so interested in comments. I know it's late. I'd like to try and push through at least this piece of, you know, this particular case. You know, and I do think, you know, we obviously have to get through this variance component before we can talk site plan stuff. That's kind of how we do it, so. Comments? Alderman, please.
Thank you. Truth be told, I'm not really sure that they meet the complete of the special conditions, although Attorney Proman did discuss those, the aspects of it and as he put it out, they have. Putting that aside, I, I don't want to see elderly housing going there. That will hurt Nashua. And I think it will, it will not open up to residents because once you put elderly housing in, it stays that way. Otherwise, every single deed has to be changed and so on. So that hurts the city. We've put enough elderly housing into the city, putting that aside. However, knowing what the plan is and knowing that there's no really such thing as a single-family attached, in my definition, that would be a townhouse condo. I lived in Caningate and that's what they were. They were, they were multi. The best of my knowledge, this does not allow for multi-use. So I'm trying to put that aside. I'm trying to look at just these variances. Knowing that they would have by right to put in elderly housing, I truly think that the hardship would be more on the city than on them. And it's not uncommon for someone to buy a piece of property knowing that there is a chance that they could change variances or get special exceptions and so on. So I don't buy that, that they went in knowing all these things, so therefore we shouldn't give it away. I'm very conflicted. I'd like to hear what other people have to say about the hardship issue. I'm really not sure how I want to go with this. So, thank you.
Mr. Barley?
I have similar feelings to you. I mean, I'm conflicted in the sense that I agree with Mr. Parsons. I think, you know, and I agree with what you just said, you know. I think this is much better suited to non-age-restricted housing. That is the need in the city and it doesn't make sense. I mean, I do think this ordinance, as it's currently written, is failed. It does not make sense where we are today, to your point. I mean, there is, in my view, there's at this point clearly no viable commercial development that's going to come in there because it would have come in in the last 30 years if that was the case. And it may have been at the time reasonable to limit this to elderly housing, but it doesn't seem reasonable to me now. It just, so logically, it doesn't make any sense and I would like to approve variance, but I am also struggling with the same issue about the special conditions. And I don't know, at the moment, I'm finding it difficult to conclude that there are some special conditions. So notwithstanding everything I just said and what I think is, what should be the reasonable result here, you know, I'm just, again, I'm struggling with that particular criteria.
Mr. Hirsch?
I'm very much in favor of the variances. I feel it's the only, the best use of the property. I feel it's an attractive design. He's got, which is a separate issue, I understand. Economically, last 30 years, retail has totally changed, commercials totally changed, you know, around the country, around the world. You're not going to see viable retail type of use or commercial use in that area because of the demographics, location, on and on and on. Just ain't going to happen. I'm in the business, so I think we should really support the variances.
Go ahead, Mr. Hudson.
Yeah, I'm not necessarily struggling so much with what the proposal is. I think it's a good overall proposal. It's just, you know, meeting the, meeting the regulations and finding, finding that the arguments have been sufficiently supported. I mean, I found Mr. Chisholm's argument about the, you know, the fact that it's not on one of the public streets, it's kind of setback and those kind of arguments, that adds and I think supports, you know, the true, kind of a true hardship criteria, not so much, not so much some of the other arguments that are made. So, I mean, I don't, the city does need housing. I don't, I don't object to removing the elderly part of that, but I don't think I can go further than that at this point without another variance, addressing the multifamily nature of the proposal. So I mean, I know that's a secondary thing for the next, next thing.
Yeah.
But, you know, I would, I would support these two variances, but fall short of approving the whole thing outright.
Yeah, I would just say, let me just add, you know, to me, the hardship here, yeah, it's, property's got a condition on it that is essentially stale. It's like not consistent. It's almost got like two conditions on it, right? It's got one condition that says it needs to be consistent with our current master plan. And then it says, "But it has to be these uses." And our current master plan says, those two are in conflict, as far as I see. So to me, that's kind of where the special condition is, is this thing was drafted with a certain set of uses that really didn't contemplate where the world is right now. And it essentially creates a useless lot, which is why it's been there, I'm sure, for 30 years with nothing on it. You know, I mean, it's kind of like analogous to like, you know, putting an airport lot in a valley. It's useless because you can't fly into it without hitting the frigging walls of the valley. You know what I mean? It's like, I get it and, you know, in the particular FOU was, you know, they tried to project what they thought was going to be the best for that. But I just think that list of uses is too narrow and is now like almost archaic. And a lot of the uses are not, they're not even practical and they're not, they're not consistent with the master plan anymore. So if I had, you know, that's how I'm looking at the special condition is it's got this set of rules on it that make it useless, which is really, to me, and I agree with you that, you know, buying a property knowing that those can, I mean, we have the processes in place to do the variances and do the change. I mean, you know, that's for everyone to use. I mean, then, you know, that's used all the time, so. Alderman, please.
Thank you so much. We talk about the master plan all the time and we talk about, as you pointed out, the master plan is talking for more homes and so on. The master plan itself, sometimes I love it. I think it's a great plan, but it talks to everything. It talks to increasing businesses. It talks to increasing green space. It talks to increasing residents. And the truth be told, all three of those kind of conflict with each other. So we like to go to the master plan and I think that's important, but for kind of the general public, it's what we fall to, but it conflicts itself. The city really needs all of those things. But now, having said that, one of the things is I have a dear friend who lives in Hollis and the one grocery store that they have has closed and gone and now they have to come shopping in Nashua. They're not really happy about it and so on. So, so small grocery stores really don't cut it anymore. They may do it up in Berwick, Maine and so on, but I just don't see them being able to, for the cost of the per square foot, they're just not going to make it there. Could other places go there? Yes. Now, if we do agree to these, then they still have to come in. I don't want to play games with words. It's not a single-family attached. They're multifamily condos, whatever you want to call them, but they're not single-family attached. But we would address that separately as to whether or not that that would be acceptable, whether or not we would do that. Whether that was elderly housing or not, it's still not single-family type of thing. But if we do approve this, then we just, we have to talk about all the other things at a later date. Correct?
Right, yeah. The form itself, you know, in terms of whether it's multifamily, what it looks like, architectural, that kind of thing, that's the site plan. I mean, that's clearly, we have to discuss that there. You know, my two cents a little bit on the multifamily part is, and so I was asking, asking, planning is, you know, three, it's not, but four, it is. I mean, that's, you know, we could talk about, again, that, we shouldn't talk about that in this form. I think, I think that's the next meeting piece, but Mr. Barley?
Yeah, just to speak to, Mr. Hudson raising a point in, right, Mr. Chisholm had indicated this. You know, the fact that it's, I don't know if it's, if it's the only lot within this, the business district that doesn't have any frontage, but I mean, that is something that would distinguish the property from the other properties that are surrounding it. So, you know, that's causing me to potentially rethink, I guess.
Well, do we want more comment? Does someone try to put together a motion one way or the other and put it up there? See if people vote on it.
I guess that would lead it to someone else maybe to craft a motion in this case.
All right.
I guess with the reminder that we do, we are, we should procedurally, substantially the motion address each of the criteria.
Yeah. Take a shot, where?
I won't be able to pull together. I know that.
All right. Let me, I can make a motion because I don't do it normally, but I'm going to do it because I want to move this along, so. All right, so I'm going to make a motion to, the variances, we get to do them separately?
The variances have to be done separately, yes.
Separate, okay.
One at a time.
So the first one is with regard to non-age-restricted residential. I'm going to say I'd make a motion to approve that and I would say that it is, it is not contrary to the public interest. I think it's very much within the public interest to not have age-restricted housing there. It's completely consistent with the master plan. It's consistent with all the city studies that have been done. Observing the spirit of the ordinance, the ordinance clearly indicates consistency with the current master plan. And the current master plan again says, "This is what we need throughout the city." So I see that being, you know, part of it. Substantial justice would be done to the property owner. That's, I think that's obvious. It does allow that to be done, but I don't think that there's any harm to the general public and to the city. I think it's the opposite again. I think that the city is benefits. I mean, they benefit on a tax basis because it's been a 30-year site that's done nothing, which is surely not collecting much of anything for taxes. It's an eyesore right now. It's been that way for 30 years. I can't imagine it being what it is, is adding any value to anybody's property. And certainly residential on residential doesn't have a property impact. So I don't think it diminishes the values of surrounding properties. Even the businesses that were there, we've heard testimony that more people are better for the businesses that are there. So I see that being there. And then as far as the hardships, I'm going to stick with, I think that the way that the ordinance is, was drafted has essentially become an unsuccessful set of uses for restrictions for this property now. Times have changed, cities changed, so I think that's a special condition and I think that generates the unnecessary hardship, in my opinion. So that's why I'm going to leave it. That's my motion. Does anybody want to second it? Seconded by Mr. Hirsch. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Do we need, do we need to do, should we?
Oh, we got to do a roll call. Yeah, you said roll call votes?
That would be good.
Okay. You want to call the roll? Just the people in here, just record it. You can just do, obviously.
Just the ones over here?
Yeah.
Yeah. Mike Pierce, he's out. Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Patricia Kleen?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
Okay, so that motion passes unanimously.
All right, with regard to the second motion, so this is a variance to exceed the maximum number of stories, two point five permitted, three stories proposed.
May I ask a question about that?
Yes.
If we were to pass that, it was something that kind of came to my mind, and we removed the two point five stories, allow them to have three stories, the height restriction is still there, correct?
It's up to us. We actually can adjust dimensional.
I know, but I just, if we don't make any changes to it, what's written is still intact?
Yeah, and they're, they're meeting the thirty-five-foot limit.
Okay, that, I just wanted to hear that, so.
Yeah.
Okay, I know we can make changes, but as it, as it stands, okay?
Sure, okay. So, you know, I would make the motion for the, with respect to the second variance to exceed the maximum number of stories to three, be approved. I would say that's completely not contrary to public interest, because it's still within the dimensional limit of the, the underlying district even, so I don't see how it could possibly cause a problem in that arrangement. I think it observed, very much observes the spirit of the ordinance, because the ordinance didn't give any dimensional requirements on the FOU, but it, it, you know, even if we just fall back to the R30, we still get the, it's within dimensional. I think that there's substantial justice done to the property owner, allows the, you know, more green space, better use of the, of the site. I don't think that harms anything as far as the general public is concerned. I think it's, again, the opposite, the more green space we have, the better. You know, if they can fit it in that dimension and get the garage underneath, I think that's a win-win. I don't, I don't see how that causes any issue or harm. I don't think that diminishes value of surrounding property. I think, again, by not spreading it out and by, you know, keeping more green space, that to me goes the opposite way again, and increases value. And I, I think that's a totally unnecessary hardship. I mean, I, I don't understand why we have a story limit, frankly, period. It seems like what we care about is the dimension. You know, and I understand the story kind of concept when you start going into kind of high-rise and stuff like that, and that's usually where you see that, that kind of talk, because it's, you know, people can't walk up and down eight floors quick enough to get out of fire or whatever, but, you know, the difference between two point five and three, to me, you know, it's like someone walking from their attic versus walking from, from the upper floor. I don't, I don't think that's reasonable, so I think that's an unnecessary hardship with a special condition, for sure. So that's my motion. Second, second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? No. Okay.
Roll call again?
Yeah.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Patricia Cleese?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes unanimously. So we, we still have the, the site plan. Unfortunately, we're at eleven thirteen. I don't, I don't, we're not gonna get through the site plan, so, so I would, I would like to recommend that we table the site plan to, at the next meeting, I think.
Did we, did we open?
We haven't accepted jurisdiction.
We haven't accepted, so we could just postpone it. But we need a motion to postpone. And is the, do we need to ask the applicant or accept the?
Uh, no, because you haven't taken jurisdiction.
Oh, we haven't taken it, okay. So does, anybody want to, I'm recommending the motion.
Just a question, though, because I think we've got a fairly full agenda on the first now, or no?
Yes.
I don't think so.
No?
No. It's not the worst agenda we've had.
No.
No.
Ringing endorsement there.
All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I just have a question for staff. I mean, if, if, if one of us thought that this site plan didn't conform to the zoning, we couldn't therefore take jurisdiction, correct?
Correct, yeah. So this would be a debate that would be held before the board takes jurisdiction. The board would have the opportunity to ask the applicant to make a case as to why the board should take jurisdiction, but that would, that would occur before jurisdiction is taken.
Yeah, that means during the jurisdictional discussion?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, if somebody wants to ask applicant?
There's been a lot of discussion about multifamily, you know, the, you know, semantics here, and I just, I just want to be on the record with a, with a description of what the process will be and what the concern would be should, should any of us be hung up on that part of it.
I agree.
So, so if, if the board did determine during that discussion that a variance would be needed, that meeting, basically, you wouldn't be able to proceed, you know, we, you, the applicant would need to file an application for that variance, that would need to be duly noticed, and then, once that's occurred, you know, you'd be able to accept jurisdiction and hear the site plan and a multifamily variance.
Well, I, I think, you know, we can inform the applicant, they can hear what we're saying, that, you know, that's going to be a concern of ours during the jurisdictional discussion, and they should come prepared to, to, to discuss that in detail.
Yes.
So, I see a lot of head nodding over there, so I think I'm comfortable that we're getting our point across.
Excellent.
So, okay. All right, so we do need a postponement motion, I think, so.
No, Mr. Barley?
Go ahead.
And, no, I look at the agenda so I can see.
It's A twenty-two dash zero zero three nine.
Yes, so I would, I would make a motion as to case A twenty-two dash zero zero three nine, that we postpone that matter until the December first, twenty twenty-two meeting of the planning board.
All right, so we have that motion to postpone A twenty-two dash zero zero three nine to December first. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Alderman Klee. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close, none, that motion passes. The only thing we had left on the agenda, we probably can, did anybody get a chance to look at the tentative agenda? Was there any proposal, proposals of regional impact? Can you check it out? We can push that.
I didn't see it, yeah.
We can push that to the next meeting if you want, I don't.
I can just say I didn't see it.
All right, so I'm gonna push that to the next meeting, and.
Move to adjourn?
Yeah, I take a motion to adjourn. Is there a second on that? Second by Mr. Hirsch. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. And that motion passes. We adjourned at eleven eighteen.